Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty-five. We will get started tonight as promised, five minutes after so that we could all get adjusted to new traffic patterns here in town. We will call to order our Amherst School Board meeting, our second meeting this month. It is December nineteenth. We are joined by our principals, Dr. Kathleen Murphy and Dr. Chris, no, not doctor, excuse me, Kristen Gothier. I was trying, Kristen, but you just, you, you gave up the game too soon. And of course, our SAU administration staff as well. As we get started here tonight, we are going to open up actually a public hearing first today. So if you can make that correction, we're not calling the meeting to order. We'll do a public hearing instead. Of the actual meeting order at this point. Tonight, we're going to be having a public hearing. To approve the withdrawal of approximately one point seven million dollars from our capital reserve fund. This will allow us to continue on with phase two of our roof and HVAC project at Amherst Middle School, which will be section C. Which is, at one point, was over the fifth and sixth grade wings. Is that still the same layout there, Kristen? That roof on the left, it's still fifth and sixth grade wing of the building. It's part of the older building. Okay. When you walk into the main entrance, it's that roof right on the left. Yeah. Okay, eighth and fifth. There we go. So eighth and fifth grade wings, which I said to Steve earlier, didn't really matter which wings it was in terms of a naming mechanism, but there we go. We did it anyway. So. Per RSA one ninety-eight twenty, Amherst School Board will host this public hearing to expend funds from the Amherst Capital Facilities Repair, Maintenance and Improvement Trust Fund for the following. The amount of approximately one point seven million for phase two of the roof replacement project and interior HVAC renovations at Amherst Middle School. And this hearing is being held at South Heagan High School in the Learning Commons on today, December nineteenth. At five thirty-seven PM as we officially get going. So we will open it up for public comments. There is nobody in person here tonight. Likely probably due to maybe some road changes and some kids being out of school today. We do have a couple of folks that are online tonight. So if you'd like to. Comment virtually, please raise your hands. The instructions that you need are in the actual chat feature as well, but raise your hands, turn on your camera, have your name and your name in the avatar. And then just say your name and town of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. I don't see any hands. I don't see anybody in person as well. Give it another second. And we will close the public hearing tonight. And with that, I will now call to order the regular portion of the meeting, our actual school board meeting tonight at five thirty-eight PM today. The public hearing will close at that same time. And right away, I will take a motion to approve what we talked about in the public hearing to expend. One point seven million dollars out of the Amherst facility, capital facilities, repair, maintenance and improvement trust fund. For phase two of the roof replacement project at Amherst Middle School.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion from Shannon. Can I get a second? I have a second from Jason. Is there any further discussion or any comments anybody would like to make about this, this expenditure of funds? Terry?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Building and Grounds and, and Roger for working really hard on bringing this proposal forward. And I think it's the best we can do right now with the funds we have. And thank you to the taxpayers who allowed us to accumulate into this fund so that we can take care of business.
I would second that, Terry. That was gonna be my comment as well. The Building and Grounds Committee Shannon has been integral in that both during her time prior to the board and as a board member. But also to the administration as well, over the last couple of years with the board, in conjunction with the board, really working to make sure we had a rainy day fund saved up. So that we could do projects like this. In addition, what we're trying to do with the Wilkins project, but being able to maintain and do these long-term repairs. Needed at Amherst Middle School. So I do say thank you to Shannon and the Building and Grounds, but also to the administration and. Previous iterations of this board for putting together their heads together and doing some thoughtful planning that had been really neglected for. Probably the ten to fifteen years prior to the last couple of years of us doing this. So. With that, I will note that Tim Theverge was not able to be here tonight. He is traveling. So there are just four of us here tonight, but I will call a vote to accept the motion made by Shannon. Oh, sorry. Before I do that, Steve.
I just wanted to just note that because of the savings plan and building around, this actually saves significant money. As opposed to because they had the money now into March. And I just want to give the board credit. Because this is the fiduciary responsibility, right? Wasn't that true?
Yep. 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 That's part of why we're having this discussion now, because we're going to be able to realize a cost benefit to. Expect taking this vote, having this hearing and expending those funds now so that we can get ahead of other districts and the March vote. To get the best price for our taxpayers and our district.
And again, so that was the advanced planning, being able to do this in December as opposed to March, not just necessarily December as opposed to twenty twenty-seven or something along those lines. It's an immediate savings over a couple of months from now when. These projects typically get approved by school boards and school districts. So. With that, I will now call the vote. All in favor of the motion? Or in favor, nobody opposed, none abstained, and one absent tonight. So that will. Be approved four to nothing. And now we, we know that definitively, our very last day of school will have to be before we start construction. That Monday after the current last day of school on that Wednesday. So I appreciate everybody's work on that, and we'll look forward to seeing some big trucks and. A lot of cranes and some other equipment at Amherst Middle School starting in mid-June, mid-June.
Yeah, no, I, it's, it's really, it's very exciting to, to have this hearing and to have this pass. You know, it wouldn't be possible without the residents of Amherst continuing to approve our request for capital reserve savings. I know that we are committed to continuing that moving forward. So. Thank you, Amherst. It's exciting to see, you know, that this work is going to begin happening. We have quite a stretch of road ahead of us. But beginning to see some of it in the rearview mirror is, is really great.
Just part of a long, long phased in project that will be undertaken over at AMS as well. So this is just step two of what'll be a couple of steps. To get us further along that road for a new roof and proper HVAC in, in that building as a whole. So. All right, with that, moving on to our next item, we will go to public comment for the regular portion of the meeting tonight. Again, I don't see anybody in attendance, but if you are online tonight and would like to address the board, please. Again, raise your hands, turn on your camera. Everybody has their names in their avatar already, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. So if you'd like to speak, we can raise your hand and we'll make you a panelist, and then we'll give you the go-ahead once Steve makes that change. Give it a minute for anybody to chime in. But seeing none, we will close public comment for now. We will have a second session later on in the meeting tonight. So we'll go to the next item. It's our consent agenda. Mainly items on there tonight are all unanticipated revenue. So before I take a motion to accept that. I do want to thank the Amherst PTA. They had a couple of donations in there for about seventy-one hundred dollars for playground equipment. And the Aquaba Ensemble over at Wilkins School. And then Gesska Studios, our photographer that does the school picture day between AMS and Clark Wilkins, thirty-eight hundred dollars in donations. Kathleen and Kristen, that's essentially just a revenue share off the pictures that parents order, correct? So thirty-eight hundred dollars, and that'll be split roughly evenly between the two schools. And then Amherst Middle School will also receive two hundred and sixty-four dollars from Hanford Helps and their community programs that benefit schools throughout the year. So. With that, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Jason. Can I get a second? Terry? Any questions? Any comments? Okay, all in favor? Four opposed, none, excuse me, four again, four, four, and none against. Four opposed just flows much better. So all in favor, it's a four-nothing vote. All right, we'll go to the report section. I won't go through these individually. I will just open it up for comment from the board. We. Have a handful of reports. We have a handful of items on the agenda tonight, so I will let the board ask any questions. Seeing that our special services coordinator is not here, if we have any specific ones about that report. We're more than capable, feel free to send me an email, and then we will send that along to be able to get some answers a little more in-depth. And if we need to have. Have Heather in for a future meeting, we can certainly do that to address some of those more thoroughly if needed, but there was a comprehensive report. In our packet tonight regarding special ed programming and a full analysis of this by Heather along with Nezdeck. It is available in the agenda if you'd like to read that. So we can certainly address questions to her offline and then come back and answer those with the board at a future meeting if needed. But. Any, any questions on the reports? Anything that anybody wants to dive into? Shannon?
Well, I did want to thank Dr. Jennings for the executive summary that she provided ahead of the Nezdeck. Report. That's something that we had asked for, so it was exciting to see it, and it was very, I found it incredibly helpful to have, to have that from her. So I, I just appreciate that, and I'll send any questions forward as you have requested, but I look forward to having a more in detail conversation about this at some point in the future.
Great. You had the reports we had were the principals' reports for Clark Wilkins and AMS, the facilities report from. Our facilities director, our treasurer's report, and then three different Nezdeck reports, enrollment, special education trends. The findings, the executive memo from Heather, and then the special education trend report as well. Jason?
Yeah, so I have questions about. Both the principal reports, and then why does this microphone miserable? Don't defend it. Um. So Kathleen, one a question and then one comment. So looking at the enrollment for Clark Wilkins, looks like we lost five students since September. Do we know? Why is it just families that moved out? Is it one big family that moved out? Or did we do any? Like exit interviews? Do they make other, you know, choices or options?
A couple of families relocated, leaving the community, and we just had four new students enroll that are starting the week after the break. So in my.
Even swap.
My January report, you'll see an increase there as well.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is I know we look at Nezdeck reports, and we look at the building project, we constantly hear like, well, you're saying it's going to increase, but then it decreases. So I just. So it sounds like we're going to actually even out.
Yeah, and I would add, I know I noted in the report about enrollments for kindergarten. Last week it was seventy-one. When this report was due, it's eighty-one as of today. Which is pretty significant for not finishing the first month of registration yet. So we're, we're excited about that.
Where would you say it is typically at this point in time, if there is a typical?
Yeah, in past years, we've opened in January or early February, and we've had around fifty to sixty registrants. We do have a larger cohort of pre-K four students transitioning up, so that's an impact. And we might just have a really eager group of parent base that is attentive to the information that was shared that might have registered a little early, too. So we're keeping track of that data. We're also tracking students who are registering who were not on our census. So we can be sure to kind of, you know, see if there's any, any changes or things we need to be more prepared for in the future and share with you.
And then. My one comment, if I, if I may, is I really appreciate the, the work with executive functioning and. The professional development around that and the importance of executive functioning for our students. Such a great foundational skills that our students need. So I really applaud that work, and I think it's definitely worthwhile work to do. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We had a, that, you know, came from our special education team. They, you know, put a proposal together wanting to hear from an expert. They took some additional time on that early release, staying until nearly four-thirty last Wednesday. To engage in a webinar together as a team. And then during our winter PD staff meeting series, we're going to have three more sessions that are teacher-led that are kind of. Extensions of that professional development offering, too, and more staff may be able to participate in it. So excited about that work.
And then Kristen, I'm just looking at my prepared notes here.
He has very tiny handwriting, by the way.
It's been called serial killer handwriting. A question about the grading. So it looks like you're putting together a committee to look at grading. And so could you explain a little bit as to what the reason behind that is? Is it like that we feel we're not reporting accurate grades? Or is it? Good. I don't want to.
Yeah, that's great. So I've gotten some feedback, some formal and informal feedback from community members, parents. And really, and teachers as well, right? So different perspectives. That they don't feel that our current system, whether it's a software, whether it's just the way that we're reporting out, is not really. Communicating well as to what students, how students are progressing, and people don't necessarily have a clear picture of their students' progress. I'm personally feeling this, like I'm seeing it in, in families. I'm seeing it in our teachers. Our teachers spend a lot of time inputting grades, and I don't necessarily know that, that our families. Are either accessing it or fully understanding the breadth of, of the information that's going in there. So we're examining it and. We had our first committee meeting last week. Steve was there, Christine was there. We had a really, really great meeting, I thought, representative group of teachers. And looking to make some decisions and likely make a shift. And I'll have, I'll have an update for you in the coming months about exactly what that looks like. But we just had an organizational meeting. You know, just, just to kind of set the meeting schedule and get some, some sort of end goals. And our end goal is to make everything a lot clearer. For everybody, because if we can strengthen those parent and school partnerships, I think we're in a better place.
Yeah, my only caution would be, I just want to make sure, because you know. We're looking at data to track and make sure our kids are growing and progressing and achieving at the level that we want them to, to achieve. As I just. Also want to make sure we're preserving whatever data we need so that our teachers, like, so the parents might not understand, maybe we have to report differently, but make sure that. The educators who are working with the kids still have the data necessary to. Track progress, because I know as part of one of the reports that we got, I think it was actually about the elementary, but like math, and but we had local data, and that's like the data that I'm most interested in when we talk about student achievements. Like, what's that local data look like?
My hope is actually that if we're able to make some changes that we might be able to better use our local data.
Even better.
My, my experience, not to quote Steve, but in my past life, is I had a lot of experience sort of comparing that local data to the. To, to the state testing data and to the, the NIMAD data. And so. I'd like to be able to get to a place where we can look at that here and see if it correlates, or if it doesn't, and be able to at least, you know, dive into that and take a look at it. So. I agree with you a hundred percent. And as we get more information about what that looks like and where we're going, we'll keep you posted for sure.
And then just one real comment. I really appreciate your efforts. It looks like the evaluations have gone up immensely. And appreciate, you know, meeting with Assistant Superintendent Chamberlain bi-weekly to kind of looks like review some of those things and, and help with all that processes. So. Thank you. It's obviously a very different picture from last year. Understanding last year was your first year, so it's, looks like you're settling in, and we really appreciate that.
We're putting a ton of time into classrooms, and it's definitely the important stuff, and I'd like to be in classrooms even more than I already am. You know, those, those numbers obviously reflect the minimum. And, but I'd like to be able to go above and beyond that. And so that's our hope is to get the minimum, to be able to get past and, and get past that minimum so that we can move beyond that.
I just want to have a follow-up to that. It was my, my, my question there was. Obviously, there's focus to get the minimum done. Let's say it's January fifteenth when you get the minimum done. Is it still the intention to stay on that same accelerated path or to stay on that same path to be able to do additional ones by the end of the year? Does that change? What is the, what do you anticipate that being in the perfect world?
Yeah, I mean, like every, every part of the year has different phases that come up, right? So. In the spring, we start doing a lot of the planning and the scheduling and all of the things that come for the next school year. So right now, speaking to you on December nineteenth, yes, I would love, that is my plan. I would, I would love to be able to get into as many classrooms. I think the piece that I really want to be able to do more of is to be able to have those conversations with people after. Because that, to me, is the most valuable part. It's not necessarily about checking a box. Online. It's not about filling out the paperwork. It's being able to have those good discussions. And that's my favorite part about the formal observations is those forty-five minute or hour-long conversations after. And so the more I can do those, the better. And. We don't always get to do those to the depth that we want to when we do the informals, but that's always the goal.
Further comments, Shannon?
Yeah, so a few things. Since we're talking about observations, can I, can I ask you to just walk us through that a little bit for, for anyone who may not be fully aware of that process? So when you make your formal observation. And you're talking about kind of closing that loop, right? And then going back and having that conversation. Like, what does that look like for like someone in the public who might be wondering how, how our teachers are observed and?
Yeah, so I can, I'll start from the beginning, right? So depending on where someone is in their certification cycle or how many years they've been in the district, right? There's a certain amount of minimum observations that they have. Here, right? We have sort of a, like a formula for how many observations or what types of observations. And it's really, you know, like that minimum I'm talking about, but we can go above and beyond that for sure. And sometimes people will say, hey, can you pop into my classroom and see me, right? And so they, the teacher or the professional has asked for us to do an additional observation. Sometimes that comes up as well. And I love that because that tells me that someone's open for feedback and excited and, you know, looking for, for. To me, I think it's an honor when someone asks me to come in, right? Like, it's, it's, it makes, it makes it, this is the art of teaching for me, right? It's exciting. So, so we start with that, then we. We start scheduling things. So we start reaching out. This year, we, we popped in, just did some quick informals, not necessarily write-ups, but quick five to ten minutes. Wrote people a quick note just to say, hey, here, we like what we saw. And that was September. We, we took the first couple of weeks to do that. When we do our informals, that's like a ten, fifteen, twenty-minute, right? A glimpse, a snapshot, a selfie, if you will, right? Of just what's happening in the classroom. We measure it against our thoughtful classroom rubric. And it's just what we see, quick snapshot. We might not see the beginning, we're not going to see necessarily the beginning to the end of the lesson. We're not going to see how they started it all the way to the end. We're not going to see every little piece. But that's why it's important that we get in and do those several times, because hopefully by the end, you've got a good picture. Of, of the whole thing, once you've gotten into different pieces of that. And I try to be thoughtful. I take a look at the schedule when I'm going into a room and, you know, make sure I'm not just coming in the last five minutes of a class and that type of thing. When we talk about a formal observation, I will generally reach out to the employee and say, hey. When would you like to do your formal observation? You have a unit coming up, you know, just try to put it in there for a little bit about what they'd like us to come see. And so we started doing that process pretty early, fair, I think, October-ish. And so we started scheduling those, and once they tell me when they'd like us to come observe, we schedule a pre-observation meeting. At that meeting, they bring us a lesson plan. And we sit down and talk through a pre-observation form, right? What are your less, what are your objectives? What is your assessment plan? How are you going to know if students achieve your, you know, what you want them to achieve by the end? Just talking through the lesson. What data would you like me to collect during the lesson for you? Those types of questions, sort of a preview of the lesson. And then, you know, do they even just reflect self-reflective questions? Do you have any questions about how you think the lesson's going to go? Those types of things. And then we go in, we do the observation. I kind of tend to do a, you know. Everybody does it a bit differently, but captures the same thing, I think. I kind of do a running list of everything that happens in the class. And while I'm doing that, I also kind of take notes on what some, some different things. So that our model in this district is praise, what are the things that. You know, we're really liking and the things that really fit well with our rubric. Pose, what are some questions or wonders we have? And then propose, what are some propositions or some ideas that we have? You know, sort of that constructive feedback piece. And then we kind of take those notes throughout the formal observation, finalize things, wrap them up on our own after we've seen the observation. And then schedule a post-observation meeting with, within a few days. I try to do it within that week as quickly as I can. To be able to meet with them and talk to them about that observation. And so I sit down, and usually my first question is, how did it go? I want their take on it first, and then I go through and kind of give them my feedback. And what's great is I found recently, I've done a lot of these lately, because all of the people who are new to Amherst Middle School have been on my list. As a supervisor. And we've had really great conversations that have been like, really like professional in nature, like, what are your thoughts on, what are your philosophy on this? And? What do you think about this? Or what's your experience here? And it's fun to learn about people's experience and. Where they, you know, where they envisioned their practice going within the school and, you know, how they see things happening in their department and, and those types of things. So. I think they've been very collegial discussions, and I think they've been. I've seen, my favorite thing to see is once you have that discussion. And then you go back in for another observation to be able to see that some change has been made. Right? Whether it's something that they've reflected on and decided to make a change, or whether it's something that we've reflected on and, and proposed to them. So. That's the long story.
No, that's fantastic. I think, you know, it's, it's easy to look at a chart that shows your formal and informal observations. I think it's really. Important for, for us as a board and for anyone who watches these meetings to understand really kind of the depth of, of what goes into that. I think the feedback loop is really important for. You know, professional growth for our educators and for what we're going to see like in our classrooms. So I appreciate you.
I would see each formal observation is like a, at least like a three to four hour investment.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that, that's clear. So thank you. Like Jason, I also want to echo. Something on the grading and reporting committee. I was happy to see that, that that's upcoming. I think that from, from a parent perspective, there are so many standards. That we're, that our teachers are grading our students on, and it can become a little overwhelming. So I think that. You know, finding some ways to make that a little more clear and concise for the parent community will be welcome. Especially if it's something that our educators are, are hoping, you know, and, and being a part of as well. I know that at South Heagan, they've done a lot of work there. So. And it may be too early in your committee to ask this question. Are we going to be modeling after some of what has happened? At South Heagan, or are we just way too early in the process to know? And I'm thinking about our eighth graders moving up and kind of transition and.
No, I think there's a strong, we're definitely, there's definitely been a lot of conversation between myself and Steve and Christine and Mike. About looking at our portrait of a graduate and aligning with, with some of those competencies, the same way that South Heagan has. I've spoken, I, I've met with Dana and her team and spoken with them about their transition process. I've also put a lot of feelers out to middle schools. I kind of started with the Forbes Top Twenty list of middle schools in the state and said, just trying to get a feel of how they're grading. It's actually a very interesting picture to hear about what they're doing. It's, it's surprising. In fact, I've got a couple of Zoom meetings and phone calls with them as well, just to kind of hear, because. Obviously, there's a really big shift to competency-based grading and reporting in the two thousand six, seven, eight. And some people are still there and some people are not there, and it's all over the place. So. I'm just curious about what's working and what's not working in other places as we go through this process. So I think I, I want to make sure that we're aligning locally. But then also with what middle school best practices in our area.
Thank you.
Terry? Sorry, Shannon, do you have one?
I just had one more because she's not tooting her own horn, but I wanted to congratulate Ms. Gothier on a successful. Band concert. I hear you were a part of the, the, the performance. Yeah, yeah, you got it. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, no, the band concerts were, were great, and, and it was very impressive to see ninety fifth graders during that, that concert. So.
Well, we visited, so we did visit South Heagan yesterday. Saw a certain gas point in the, in the, in the band.
Yeah.
But it was great because the, the band director asked, how many of you are in band or chorus? And like most of the crowd raised their hand in the fifth and sixth grade, and so that was great to see.
Yeah, that resonated with the high school students. They were like, mom, the whole fifth grade is in the band. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty nice to have some strong programs. So anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Terry?
Okay. All right, I got the problem speaker. So actually, on the grading, I have my, my own questions on that one. The two things that I've certainly heard the most often have been on consistency. And between teachers and even at the same subject, same grade level, and just between. Students, like when there's twins and the, the, at least perceived lack of consistency. So I think that's one of the big things. And I think that the big thing for our parents is just. Should I be worried or not? Like, how, how do I know when to support my student and when I should be pushing in and scheduling time with the teacher or, or doing things? And so I think whatever we can do for that. Bit of clarity, because really, when it comes down to it, you want to make sure your child is doing well and know if you need to support them more. So.
I think you're right, Terry. I think there's a, there's a calibration component. So we're, we're using some of our early release time. This year for our grade level departments to meet and do some of that calibration. So looking at assessments and. Taking a look, I, I, we kind of mapped out what are all the common assessments that are happening at each of the grade level departments, so we could get a feel for that. Because I think that's, that consistency is important. Like, is my student going to get the same experience no matter which seventh grade team they're on, or no matter which sixth grade team they're on? That's, that's a cornerstone of middle school, right? We want to make sure that that's the case. We, nobody's got pot envy. And, and every, it, it shouldn't matter, right? And, and the other piece of it is parent education, right? A great deal of parent education was done with, with Empower, and when, when all of this came on board originally. And so I think. Anytime we're talking about grading and reporting, grading and reporting is communication system to families. And so making sure that we do parent education, student education, you know, family education, all of that is, is really important. So that will be part of the process as well, and it was something that we discussed at the committee meeting.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And so I, I echo everyone else in being glad that you're taking that up. I think it's important work. And certainly something people feel strongly about. So I am glad to see it being addressed. I was very happy to see. The focus of the suicide prevention training, because I know it's mandated, we have to do it, but I think that the way we do it matters. And so having it be the protective elements of, of having good, strong partnerships with the school community, I was happy to see that focused. And I think that this is one that I feel strongly about, because especially we're seeing it younger and. Scarier. And so thank you for making sure that our staff is really on board with that. And thank you to Deb Dayon for, for organizing. And I think that I'm. I'm always happy to see that on the agenda. And I know there have been a lot of beyond just band concerts. I love when we're able to have our, our older and younger kids crossing over. And our younger get to see the older students, and the high school came and played, and they were. All of those things I think are so important to see where they're going to go to and to model forward. And then for the, for the older ones, they love to come down and be like, I used to be that small, and. It's just such a great thing for the school community at large. Are there any other, I mean, there's so many things that have gone on in the last month, month and a half. So anything you'd like to highlight? Especially for each of your schools. I mean, we had circus going on, which is always amazingly wonderful. Um, we had lots of music. We had ecology school. We had a ton going on. What would you like to?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely want to highlight and thank the Amherst PTA publicly for the ongoing support of the circus. Um, that residency is truly tremendous. Our, um, physical education teacher, Mr. Holt, has partnered so well with Troy Wonderly and the Big Top Circus for a week-long experience. Kids do incredible things. Kids come out of their shells. They work together, learn teamwork skills, performing skills. Um, it, it is wonderful and culminates in such a fantastic community event. Um, energy is palpable. There's no more room in the multipurpose room. We're quite literally sitting on mats on the floor, um, together, enjoying this wonderful evening performed by our students. So Amherst PTA, that is ongoing support from them, um, you know, in part two to the fundraisers. But that's a commitment they've been able to establish with the goal of having a residency for each, um, grade level. You may have noticed that, um, our, uh, fourth graders made their way to the state house for a typical annual trip. Um, some of our classes were particularly lucky this year and were able to meet Governor Sununu in, uh, session. Um, he took the time to greet each student. Um, and then our local representatives, um, Representative Murray and, um, Mr. Bayou, uh, also took time to show the students around, um, the, the chambers. Um, so the students had a great experience there in connection to the ongoing work in their classrooms. Um, I would just highlight too, I think, um, you know, Kristen has a similar experience with her staff. We have a lot of staff stepping up to organize some really great, um, staff events, wellness challenges, coming back to Clark Wilkins, just trying to promote that positive culture for each other, um, organizing some really great holiday events, um, for people to connect and come together. Um, it's all part of our goal to have that, um, supportive workplace environment where, um, teachers feel like they, um, you know, can engage in their best work each day too. So, um, I'm looking forward to that in the winter.
Uh, so I would agree. I know I wrote in the report about Audi Rule coming. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Tiff Mar earlier this year about having authors come to visit. I think that there's some importance there with encouraging of literacy, um, and having authors, uh, give those large presentations. But then she spent two days with our kids doing lunch and learns, um, and talking about what it means to be an author and what it means to be a writer and to go through the writing process. Um, and so I like, uh, our students to be able to see what that looks like in real life. So that was, that was a really cool thing and I like to continue that on an annual basis. And that was funded by the Amherst PTA. Um, I can't say enough about them. They've been incredibly supportive. We meet with them regularly. Uh, we have a couple of things coming in soon, um, as a result of the fundraiser. Uh, one of them's a tetherball pole along with a painted tetherball court. Uh, so Roger's been helping with the installation of that. And I don't think the ground is frozen, so I think we're going to be good with installing it soon. Um, and Roger insisted on painting, which I think is great. So we're going to get some paint and we got a tetherball, uh, a tetherball pole and, and kids really enjoy that. So I'm excited. We have some picnic tables coming too, some outdoor picnic tables, which I think would be great. We could fit about a class of students, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty students. So that could be used as an educational space. Uh, we could also toss around the idea, if we have enough supervision of having some opportunities for some lunches outside when the weather's nicer as well. So that's all from fundraising money. So I'm really excited about that, that piece. Um, so we're working with them. We're also, uh, working with them to get our, um, our barriers, our famous cement. I will not say Jersey barriers. Landworld. Um, we have barriers that, that block off the blacktop and we're working with a graffiti artist to get those, uh, designed. And so we're going to be doing that in the spring with the, a local graffiti artist to get some more color out there and make it look more fun instead of, um, the way it looks, industrial.
I, I love that you, um, you address them as graffiti artists because I agree it is art. And I'm excited to see what they, what they do. And I, I've loved all of the other art projects in the school as well. I think it's really, um, help morale to, to kind of have that ownership and, and just having your space reflect on the outside, what you're feeling on the inside, right? So in both schools, I, I applaud you for, um, taking, taking advantage of every opportunity to, to expand with what we have and, and make it the best experience for our kids. And thank you, PTA, always, and all of the families, um, who financially have supported so much. Because this is, this is what it does. It helps our students. So thank you.
Anybody else? All right. The only comment I'll have on the grading and reporting, it's one thing from classroom to classroom in seventh grade. So two seventh graders are getting identical, um, paths. But it's also teacher to teacher, um, across grade levels where some are giving the feedback. This is how you get a four, um, you know, this is what you need to do to work on that, to try to get to the three or get to the four, where that feedback is not consistent. Others do not provide that. The student needs to seek it out or, um, it's not even, it, it, at that point, it's still not a great feedback loop. So that's my only comment on that as well. So, uh, moving on tonight to our, thank you, by the way, our subcommittee reports. We'll start off with facilities. Shannon from Building and Grounds, uh, news and notes from you.
Do you want to start there or do you want to?
Yeah, we can start there. I think it's.
Do you want me to go into like everything? Like, is this just like a committee update and there's more time further on to talk about the public hearing and the Wilkins project? Sorry, I'm just trying to like.
No, we can do.
I feel like this is going to be lengthier, so.
We'll do that. Any, any news and notes from, because we have the bond hearing conversation coming up later. This is going to tie into some of the budget stuff as well. So we have time for more specifics on, uh, public hearing. Exactly. State aid and then also the, um, level debt level principle. We have that slated in the agenda. Anything else high level that you wanted to touch?
Yeah, so there's not really anything new. Building and Grounds met last week and that was basically just me providing like a summary of what the direction that the board is taking, that committee continues to have lots of good thoughts and ideas on, questions that we need to be asking. Um, you know, and things that we need to be doing, moving, you know, try, as we try to move forward with our, with our facilities work. Um, so nothing, nothing really new there until we get later on into the, into the conversation.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Terry was at the meeting. So Terry, feel free if I, if I, um, if I'm. You're welcome to use my mic, Terry, if you'd like.
Sorry. Um, the other thing I'd like to mention is that we actually asked the committee, we, we discussed the fact that, um, our kick the can number, as we used to call it. We haven't looked at it in a while and we haven't looked at what it would cost if we don't pass a full building project of one sort or another. What is the cost to not do that? Because there is still a cost. There are still systems coming end of life. There are still, um, space constraints. There are still rising enrollment. There are lots of things we have to deal with. So we did talk about trying to get a more, um, a more updated number than the one that we originally were using at the very beginning of these conversations. And that was a, um, a healthy discussion about that and what that might entail.
Yeah, just making sure we have refreshed numbers for leading into the public hearing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Other subcommittees, I know Jason, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, so Terry and I were part of a subcommittee to, uh, sift through very many qualified applicants for the reconsideration, the learning resource reconsideration committee. Uh, Terry and I have two names to bring, to bring forward. Um, so we have Mr. Charles Matthews and, uh, Ms. Jillian Berkeley. So we, again, there were so many qualified applicants. We had, uh, eleven. There were people from up higher education. There were, there was a lawyer. There were, um, just a vast number of people interested in a wide variety of skill sets. Uh, we landed on these two for a number of reasons. Uh, one, so Mr. Charles Matthews is actually a former librarian. This is something that he's dealt with. He was a library director. Um, so we thought, well, that makes sense then. He, right, would be familiar with.
He's been on, on committees like this.
Right. He's been on, right. So he's had, he's had this experience. And then, um, we chose Jillian Berkeley mainly, so she's a social worker. So, um, she could speak to, we felt like, you know, is it the appropriateness level for the emotional, um, uh, maturation of a particular age and student and, and things like that? So that's, that's kind of why we landed on those two. Um, so I guess, do you, do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion to accept those?
Sure. So I make a motion to nominate, uh, Charles Matthews and Jillian Berkeley to the Learning Resource Reconsideration Committee.
Can I get a second?
Am I allowed to second? I'll second.
Shannon will second. Uh, anything you'd like to provide for feedback on that, Terry?
Yeah, I'd like to say that we, we, it was a public meeting, so we didn't have anybody to show up to, to, um, join us. But we did have a really, um, healthy discussion about all of these. And we wanted to say thank you to everybody who put their name forward. It was really nice to see so much interest from the community. And it really, um, was legitimately difficult because everybody brought a little, something different to the table. And so we wanted kind of, we felt like at the very least, um, having a mix of, of a male and a female, at the, at the very least, we thought. And then they also had things and went with it. So we feel like everybody brings a little different perspective and we thought that, um, these would be great additions to this, should the need arise.
Any further comments, Shannon, anything?
Uh, no, I just, I, I was also impressed and, and kind of wowed by the number of applicants that we got. I read them all in the, um, Google Drive that, uh, Chelsea put together for us, which was really helpful. So thank you to, um, Chelsea at the SAU for doing that. Um, and, and, uh, yeah, I, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jason and Terry for, for volunteering to sift through those and to, to come up with two candidates. So with that, I will take a vote to accept the nomination of Charles Matthews and Jillian Berkeley to the Resource Reconsideration Committee. All in favor? Four and none opposed. So thank you to Jillian and thank you to Charles. Uh, Mike, do you think we can have Chelsea reach out to them and provide a, an email to thank them and let them know that they were selected? All right. Next on the agenda, staff retire.
I'm sorry, I, we're still doing committees, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, because I have another committee update. But I also, I, I, I think this may be the right time to do this and you can tell me if, if it's not. But this is along the lines of Building and Grounds, um, in, in my thinking here. But I'd actually like to make a motion to actually form a new committee. Um, we talked a little bit over the summer at our facilities retreat about all of the assets that we own as an Amherst School District. Um, and so I would, I would make a motion to put together a, um, a subcommittee of this board with one or two board members on it and perhaps a couple of SAU employees. Um, that would be, I don't know if I'm going to call it like a liquidation committee or something like.
Great word for it.
Something like that. Um, and I'm not saying that's what we're doing, but we need to assess, um, maybe an inventory of property. I don't know the proper name for it. I'm kind of shooting from the hip here, but, um, something of that nature. So I think it's important as we go into our continued work with our building and grounds that we have a deep understanding of our, um, physical assets. And, and if, you know, what we want to do with them, uh, as we move forward. So.
I will second that motion. I think that is a great idea because this town or this school district owns probably close to fifteen to twenty different properties, different parcels in town. Most of them are small. Some of them are shared. Some of their, some of them are maintained by the town. But if there's a way for us to be able to investigate potentially selling these, to raise funds for future building needs, to be able to just have money to offset taxes, uh, any, any variety of uses where we could utilize that money or just provide, um, you know, giving land to the town to be able to maintain and, and get it off the school district books, whatever it comes of it. I think it's a great idea. Any other discussion on that? Okay, so, uh, let's. Well, we haven't started a subcommittee in a while, so it's.
Yeah, and so like, do we want to make appointments now or do we want to like?
Let's, uh, let's wait until Tim is, Tim is not here, let's.
Well, I think that automatically puts him on the committee.
Yeah, I think you're, you're probably right.
I mean, I'm willing to serve. Great.
Okay. So Terry, you want to serve and do we want to have, we'll have Tim on it as well? And if Tim can't do it, I'm, I'm more than happy to.
I know at that facilities or street, he was interested when we talked about it then, so I.
All right. So Tim and Terry will be nominated to lead that. And then Mike, I, I will leave it to you and, and Steve to determine who from the SAU might be a good resource to have on that. And then if we want to expand that, when, when that group meets, we can look into expanding it to, um, citizens in town, other folks that might, uh, even some town, um, town employees, if you will, whether it's selectmen or if it's zoning or anything along those lines, be able to expand it. But leave it to that group to start the outreach and form this committee. I don't think it's anything that we're going to get done in by January by any means. So, um, but I think if we're looking at it in the next six months with a better plan of what to do with these parcels, it'll be a good, um, good road path or a good path for us to take.
Can you vote?
Okay. Uh, yes, all in favor of forming that committee with Terry and Tim leading the way? Four in favor, none against. Uh, that is passed. Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome. And then I just have a brief update from the Amherst PTA, um, my liaison there. So they held their annual holiday storytime last week on December fourteenth. It was well attended. Um, thank you to administration and our specialists who, um, read stories and sang songs. Um, after the holidays, the PTA will be hosting their math and science night on February thirteenth. The first and second grade students' choices, students' choice dance on Saturday, March twenty-third and the third and fourth grade students' choice dance on April sixth.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. Anybody else in the subcommittee report? Okay, so the next item on our agenda, uh, should be a fairly quick one before we get into the budget conversation, but it's one that will not be popular. Uh, I know particularly, uh, in my household, but I'm sure in, in districts across, in households across the district. But we have four teachers or four, uh, district personnel that have put in for retirement. One of them will be effective, uh, pending board approval on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. That is Clark Wilkins Nurse Linda Brenn, Linda Brennich. The other three, uh, will be effective as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So they'll have one and a half years of, of teaching left per the, uh, agreements with the AEA teaching contracts. Those three retirements are Paloma Augurin, uh, the Spanish teacher at AMS, Lynn Borkowski, the AMS speech pathologist. And the one I think that will strike a tear in many hearts or strike a chord in many hearts, Mr. Robert Allwarden, the music teacher. And there you go, gasps. First time we've had gasps in a meeting in a long time. Uh, so Mr. Allwarden will be one of those three that will retire after the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh, pending board approval. You can certainly vote against that. I don't know that I'm willing to, to do that. But, uh, it is certainly with regret, as you can tell, for all four of the candidates, but certainly Mr. Allwarden as well. Um, but again, all four, uh, all four retirees have spent a long time in this district, most of them twenty years plus, um, some of them even longer. So it is certainly with regret that we, um, discuss their retirements tonight. So I will take a motion to accept the retirements as presented, uh, in the agenda and on the Trello card tonight.
Make the motion.
Shannon makes the motion regretfully, I believe.
Regretfully.
Second, Jason with a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, we, we joke about being regretful, but honestly, um, you know, congratulations and kudos to these folks for their long careers here in our district. And just thank them for the service and the impact that they've made to students. It's, it's an exciting time in someone's life when they get to retire. Um, but obviously all of, all of these folks have, have made a mark on, on the kids of this district and the families in this town. So it will be sad to see them go, but happy. They're sweet.
Second that, Shannon as well. Anybody else? Terry, Jason? All right. So with that, I'll call a vote to accept those four retirements. And passes four to nothing. All right, budget time. I will turn it over to Amy once Steve gets the, uh, computer hooked up. Last time we had talked, we had a, a variety of discussions around the budget, but one of our, uh, I don't want to say it was a directive, but one of our conversations points was looking at a budget increase. If it began with a three, it was certainly a lot more palatable than a four. So I know that the administration's been working on that. So Amy, when you're ready, I will let you take it away.
Yeah, so, um, I see a lot of you in the file, so I did share it with, uh, with board members. In case your back is to the screen. So I'll just give Steve a minute to get that set up. I will say before I get started, um, obviously this presentation is updated. The budget file has not been fully updated with draft three. So I'll finish that up tomorrow. We were working up to the last minute to try to get all of these changes made, so. That is it. Yep, that is it. I see you in there. All right, so we can just skip ahead through budget review. Um, so we'll jump right into the summary of changes from draft two to draft three. Um, we, um, in, in working closely with Clark Wilkins, building admin and taking a look at that, um, enrollment for, uh, projected enrollment for kindergarten. We did add in a kindergarten paraprofessional so that there will be a paraprofessional in all seven of the, uh, the classrooms. Um, we took another look at that restructure of the speech language pathologist and removed that. Um, the, the way we're doing it now is fine, so maybe that's something we'll look at again next year. But, um, that we realized a savings of fifty-three, seven fifty-nine, uh, which pretty much funded the additional kindergarten para. Um, or, or did fund it. Um, we also relooked at the, uh, special education program with the, um, based on need and looking at, uh, projected enrollment for. And looking at, uh, projected enrollment for preschool. And we're able to remove a point five special education para. So that was a savings of 15,00233. And we also were able to remove a point for lunch recess monitor, again, working closely with Clark Wilkins Building Admin. There were some other personnel corrections, um, a, uh, um. Admin, not admin, um. Administrator of assistant at AMS, we needed to add some time back in. Yeah, so that was an increase in 9,00586. So the total change from this first version, I'll say of draft two to draft three was a savings of 15,851. So, yeah, you can go to the next slide. So, um, basically all the staffing changes that we've been discussing, um, going from FY '24 to FY '25 was, again, that adding that kindergarten paraprofessional at Clark Wilkins. Uh, eliminating the lunch recess monitor at Clark Wilkins, uh, adding the special ed coordinator at AMS, restructuring the preschool with the early ed director at Clark Wilkins. Adding back, um, or adding in that point for library assistance since we're in a default. So that position was not in the, in the default. It needed to be added to the budget and an overall decrease, including the one that I just spoke of a few minutes ago, uh, the point five. So the total decrease for paraprofessionals is 203,266. And that again is all based on projected student need and also that regular ed teacher at AMS that was eliminated. So the net savings for all of these positions was 58,0064. So if we take into consideration all of those changes, then the operating, change in the operating budget for FY '24 to '25 is a 4.2% increase or 1,364,573. And as, uh, Tom stated, the, um, administration was given the charge to, to go back and take a look and see what we could do to, uh, get that percent change into the, the threes and have it, um, hopefully be more palatable to the voters. So if we want to go to the next slide, um, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk about the different cost options that we developed, uh, for budget changes. And, uh, a proposal for this different version of draft three.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate all the work, uh, that we're doing on this. This is a lot of time, a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings, partnerships with the board, partnership of ways and means, uh, partnership with building administration. But at the end of the day, uh, when I interviewed to become the superintendent and there were some conversations about where we wanted to go. It was very clear there were some priorities, you know, in SAU 39, Amherst School District. And, and really what it came down to for me was trying to, you know, develop bu- uh, budgets, develop systems, put things in place that really did two things. You know, try to, you know, improve and maintain high academic achievement and student outcomes and, and experiences. But at the same time, value a whole lot about the whole student, the social emotional piece, the, you know, real inclusivity of, of both Clark Wilkins and Amherst. And so as we kind of look at it, we outlined some priorities around, you know, looking for instructional time, you know, not just with snow days, but in, in other pieces throughout our day. And in how we run our schools and what we ask our people, you know, our students and to do while they're there. We talk a little bit about, you know, how can we do this? And some of the things that I keep going back to, to kind of move towards this theory of action to achieve the, the mission of, uh, support and challenge and engage all students. Is, is for me, that partnership between, you know, administration and teachers as the people are trying to get better at their craft, to really understand who their students are. And so a, a, a budget was developed that I, I believe in, uh, and, and presented in draft one, a version in draft two. And as we kind of get into draft three, you know, at the, you know, I was advised as, as the superintendent to kind of take a look at it. What can you do? What can you do to, to, you know, make this more, you know, well received and consumed by, by the, uh, the, uh, um, community of Amherst? And at the end of the day, what we want is, is we want a, a budget that can move forward, that can still work towards what we want. But also, you know, be something that people can support. And so after a lot of conversation, um, you know, we made a decision, I made a decision to, to go ahead and, uh, take a look at the early ed coordinator and the special ed administrator at Amherst and, and remove them from the budget, um, the proposal. And at the same time, as we kind of made some changes, you know, within, uh, both Clark Wilkins and AMS still need to be able to run the building, still be able to move towards the priorities. And not just, you know, do it in, in a manner that's kind of passive, that is status quo. And so through conversations with, uh, Heather Jennings, the building principals, uh, assistant superintendents, uh, we're going to remove the, present a, a budget that removes those. But then puts an LEA representative at a point six level at AMS that provides some opportunity for our current administration to get into classrooms more. That was mentioned earlier this evening to have stronger relationships with teachers, to support teachers, to have stronger relationships with students in the building. And I think the LEA representative at AMS does allow us to do this, not as well as the special ed administration, strating position, but it allows us to do this. Um, and then as we move forward, uh, to, to kind of like move some things around at, at Clark Wilkins, uh, we, we did, you know, at one point, remove the fellow uh, there to create some space. And, and if we're going to take the early ed coordinator out and adjust some things on how we do things, uh, we would like to put that back in. And you can see the net change there of about 105, uh, and that allows us to, to get to, Steve, if you move forward to, to, uh, 3.8. And, uh, you know, for me, you know, we, we talk a lot about people saying, oh, you need to develop a responsible budget, right? We had a very healthy conversation at a couple of different levels about, you know, responsible. And, and I think the budget that we brought in at 4.2 was responsive. This is more conservative. This is more, you know, trying to get people to approve a budget so we don't go into a third straight year of default. That still allows us to do what we need to do. And so, um, that's what we're bringing forward here today. This is at the direct request of, of the, of the school board to take a harder look at this to see what we could do. And, uh, I still think that we can, you know, move forward in this and, uh, and I know other administrators do agree with this. And so that is kind of where we're at, at, at this point right here. And I can, we can pause for some questions, right? Amy, are you comfortable if we pause for some questions? And, uh, and we'll go.
Jason?
Yeah, so first I appreciate the, the willingness to, to look at this. I know that, um, you know, that's what, that's what we asked for. Um, my, my question, and I don't know if this question can even be answered, is my, I guess maybe my fear or trepidation with taking out an AMS special ed administrator and replacing that with an LEA representative while it looks nice. I don't know unless maybe you have somebody in mind, how enticing or how many applicants we'll get for a point six FDE versus being able to recruit a full administrator. I'm just thinking like, cause I know like sometimes we'll have openings and maybe only one person applies or two people apply. So I guess where are we left if we go forward with this change and then we have nobody apply to the position because a point six is not enticing?
Yeah, so, um, there's some things that we can do to make it more enticing, right? And, you know, for us, you know, there's some, you know, some grant money if we, as we kind of move towards that to maybe increase the piece of that, right? Uh, there, there's some room there, um, but still something to, to, to consider. And, and this is what I firmly believe in and I said this all along. This is a get to place. I think this is a get to place you can attract when sometimes other places can't. We have a, a very, uh, talented group of educators throughout Amherst School District. We have talented administrators, but Jason, to your point, because you know stuff, it's a risk. It's a risk, but, uh, in order to, to kind of move forward, I think a bigger risk is going to a third year of default. And so a third year of default is a risk. I think there's some things that we can do with some other funding to kind of, you know, if we desire to, uh, after see where this lands. Cause you know, it still has to, you know, be approved, because then, then we have some other issues to solve if it's not. So this is kind of where we're starting, but that's how I would answer your question on December 19th. You know, Steve, weigh in, Christine, if you wanted to weigh in, Amy?
When the position was put together, it actually falls under the retirement piece. So it's possible that we might find somebody who would really like a three day a week LEA with very experienced special ed. So that's possible because we made sure it was, you know, didn't violate, somebody could still collect their retirement and work with us for three days. But as Mike said, so that's, so you put the pool out, see what you get. And then, um, Heather, Mike's worked with Heather Jennings and taken a look at IDEA. Um, it's not some plan, it's this new position, so it can be shared with federal dollars as a year to see how we like, if, if we go that route. Obviously a lot of things have to shake out. So we think there's two opportunities here to fill this position once, once, if it gets, like I said, it gets approved, to see what you get. But it was designed specifically maybe to find that unique person, maybe the unique person who actually has a connection to ASD or SAU 39.
Yeah, and I'll add, we did budget at the, 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 the very high end of the salary scale. So it's point six, but it's a, it's a highly paid person. So it would match that. If not, if it was someone, um, less experienced, they would be lower in the salary scale and we would have some additional funding, um, if we needed to increase it to a full time. Um, and also as Steve said, there's IDEA grants as a possibility, so.
Terry?
Okay, pretend I'm not a full-time administrator and explain to me what an LEA representative is.
Yeah. And so for me, what, uh, an LEA representative does is, uh, attends meetings. The primary function and, and responsibility is to attend, uh, special education meetings on behalf of, in, in partnership with school administration. Uh, as they, uh, navigate the, the management of students' IEPs. And, you know, part of that goes in, you know, this position would be probably the, not the high intensity, you know, highly complicated type of special ed situations, but the more, you know, typical, um, you know, common, uh, you know, daily IEPs that need to be, you know, attended. And what that does is it allows someone to be solely involved in that world. And, and allows the other administrator in the building to get into classrooms, to work with teachers, uh, and to work in with students. Um, and for me, that would be the primary function and role of that position. Um, but I, I will tell you, as, as we look at it, we look at what they can do and the applicants and depending on their skillsets and experience. It kind of expands to, you know, case managing, may, maybe having some other responsibilities depending on, you know, capacity. Uh, so that's how I would explain that to you.
So yeah, I appreciate the explanation. I know that, um, I don't know how to say this in an appropriate way, but I'm gonna say it, it's a time suck. It is, all of those meetings and all of the paperwork, it is necessary, it's essential, it's important, but it takes a ton of time. And so to have somebody focused on that, that actually seems to me like a very good use of time. Um, because it, it is extremely important to our families and, and to our kids who need those services. But, um, I'm much more comfortable with this as a proposal. So, thank you.
And this position would increase the current staffing capability you have at AMS right now. This would be in addition over what you're currently operating under this year. So this would be an increase of time where building leaders can get in classrooms compared to what you're doing now. And they're already doing a better job this year than they were able to do last year.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it helps with sustainability. Um, I think people who are outside the building of education don't understand the pace that building level administrators work at in order to do three to four hours of, of visit, in order to, to support teachers, you know, in the manner that they can. Um, which is why, you know, you hear us talking about it so much. There are so many schools. And Jason, you, you, I, I knew I was part of them and I, I don't know, you know, other people who are in education. There are so many schools that this is the first area, the supervision and support and evaluation and development of teachers on a consistent, regular basis throughout the school year is one of the first areas that kind of slots. And then there's variations of quality. But for me, I've always felt like that's what moved the needle, that's what moves the needle. That, you know, uh, level of, uh, partnership, that intensity, that commitment to the process, that openness of, of teachers. Cause they know when someone cares. They know when someone has the time to do it with fidelity. As opposed to going in and doing a, a, a check system real quick to say, hey, I did it because it's part of contractually obligated. And we're trying to create that environment that you can do that. And, uh, and this helps us get a little bit closer, you know, to it. And, uh, um, so, you know, I, I, I present this, you know, and, and as a, as a viable option to help us get towards some of the charges that I was given as superintendent.
Okay. Anybody else on the budget stuff? Jason?
I just, um, had one question. I don't know, uh, if anyone could explain the impact of taking the early ed coordinator out and the impact that that means. Uh, in terms of the administrators traveling still between Clark and Wilkins and what impact that has on a daily function.
Yeah, you know, one of the things, we have some options and, and, you know, that's something I'll probably talk to more depending on how this plays out and lands. About, you know, what we want to do is, you know, we have, you know, a, a person that can, you know, you know, be who's currently on staff at, at CW, part of the administration team, that can devote more time to, to Clark. And then we use some of the other personnel to offset some of the other responsibilities. That's the gist of it, right? It's, it's pretty much status quo, but with some additional supports. And we've done some other things to provide some, throughout this budget process, to provide Clark Wilkins, which I consider a, a pretty large elementary school. Logistically pretty complicated with two buildings. That's not normal. It's not normal to ask people to do that. And so this helps with that, so. Um, but we, they, again, when you, when you get down to it, it, it depends on who you hire, what their skillsets are, what student needs are, what teacher needs are. What the superintendent says should be the priorities and people should be working towards, like all that kind of factors into it. And then what is, what, what is pass, you know, because we're at a real possibility of like, we got to get a budget passed to, to talk about what this actually looks like. But this, uh, will help us personnel that building and, and create, you know, hopefully better experiences for our students and the teachers. Anyone else?
Just, just quick things, um, the, the, uh, the rep, the LEA rep is not in the default. Um, you know, first time proposing it, uh, Mike, Amy and I spent a lot of time talking about, even though it's a special education position. We feel because it's taking on and as, as Tom just said, expanding some resources, that the right thing to do is not put it into default and see if the budget passes. It's also a teaching position, it's on the teacher's contract, so it's not administrative, it's, it's a teaching contract. But, and there is some history here about a teacher having LEA representative responsibilities to serve as a lead in the, in, in a significant number of, of special education cases. But certainly as Mike said, not the most complex, right? We still have, um, there's, there's administration support there, there's also Heather for the most complex. And, um, you know, Kathleen was pretty passionate about making some internal structural changes, um, in the preschool leader, preschool position that we can better meet the needs of kids. And just coming back with, remember, we had two fellows last year, we eliminated one to really define some spaces, Mike said, to support the early, the development of, right? The, um, director of early childhood. But again, I said this a lot last year, 1,300 hours, it's the most cost-effective, right? The fellow is very cost-effective, hands-on, frontline, working with kids all the day under the supervision of, of special education. Remember they're certified teachers who are, are, are going beyond that. Um, and so, and the other piece is, um, which I think is undervalued by me, but really come into fruition with Kathleen's leadership and support, is building a bullpen, building a resource of people who we know who like us in the most competitive hiring environment in my career. At Masters One, the, literally, this, this could pay for itself in one year. Based on, it's, you know, Amy said, the one we're looking for is hiring typically special ed, we're hiring up here. This one, hiring right out of the program because they love Kathleen and love people, that we love them, if we love them. It's a pretty good gig, so there's a lot here to get it to 3.8. And still move on what Mike is pretty committed to and forcing me to do all the time, which is trying to improve academic achievements. Does that help?
Does.
Sorry.
Terry?
I happen to agree with you that I think.
I happen to agree with you that I think that the, the quality of the fellows that we've worked with. And really building them up and doing a try before you buy, right? You get to, you get to use them for a year and then if you love them and they love you, it's. You don't have to take a risk on someone. You can just move that right up. And so I feel like it's so much bang for your buck and one of the best bargains we have going. So I'm thrilled to see this back in.
Any other questions on this specific piece? If not, I'll let Amy continue on with a presentation.
Great. And yeah, so just a couple of things on the remainder of the presentation. I, I redid the slides assuming the three point eight percent increase. So certainly we can go back, but I made the assumption that that was likely where the board would go. Not wanting to be presumptuous, we can, I can go back and add the other numbers in, but that's what's being presented. Rather than having two, rather than having two sets of numbers, I thought that would be more confusing.
Yeah, I think that's fine, Amy, to go with that.
Okay, and also, I'm not, I'm gonna go through really quickly a lot of the slides. These are repeats that you have already seen, just redone. But this is the base for your public hearing presentation, so I wanted it to be as complete as possible with updated numbers. When we get to the end, we can talk a little bit more about, about the public hearing presentation as well. So you can just go to the next. This is budget assumptions and drivers. Nothing has changed there. Budget comparison by fund. This is just breaking out the general food service and grants. And that's been updated to reflect the three point eight. It is worthy of note that the general fund is really only up three point three percent. And point four is attributed to food service and point one to grants. So that's something that the board may want to make a point of during public hearing. The next slide is just the proposed category from the operating budget to the proposed budget. So that's just a breakout of the different categories that ways and means reviews. Then we get to the default calculation. So again, nothing much has changed in here. It's just the numbers are updated. The proposed budget calculation, this is the, the areas where these are items that are potentially at risk. And this is broken out by the ways and means categories. We can talk if you want things broken out differently to show, you know, show this information in a different way. But this is how this board has done it in the past.
Maybe just a quick clarification on that last slide. When it's, we're talking AMS Administration Curriculum, that includes raises in contracts and things like that includes salary increases and the like, correct?
Yes. All right, revenue. So this is new information from last time. So this is your first look at the projected revenue and the estimated tax rate. So what we do to calculate the revenue is, or rather, and also the change in revenue is we look at FY twenty four. And, and what the revenue was projected there and then what we're projecting for FY twenty five. So food service will match the expenditure line. Grants will also match the expenditure line. The other federal, state and local includes items such as special education aid, Medicaid. Tuition from the Mount Vernon School District is a big one. Interest income, there's some shared services between the districts. So the English, is it second language person, the H VAC person, a paraprofessional. So there's lots of items that go into that. So you'll see there is an increase in all of these lines from twenty four to twenty five. This year I broke out the fund balance by what was, is being proposed to go towards the warrant articles. And then what is being proposed to offset the tax rate. So I thought it would just provide some additional clarification on that. So you can see in FY twenty four, we just had the one warrant article for six hundred and five thousand. You'll see a new number, we'll get to that. We've made some changes to the proposed warrant articles. So that total is now seven hundred and eighty thousand. Which leaves for FY twenty four, what actually did go to offset the tax rate was seven seventy two to twenty nine. We projected seven seventy five. We were really close. And we're projecting a lower number this year. Partially because we're, we have a more that is going to, that is being proposed as in more in articles to offset the tax rate. So to come up with that total amount, we look at historical data. We look at projections and, and try to come up with what, something conservative that we feel comfortable meeting to offset the tax rate. So the total change in revenues went from four four one six four seven three to four five one four four oh one. So that number gets carried to this next slide. Where you see the, the revenue line, which is the second line. The first line is the total appropriation, which includes the budget as well as the warrant articles. So that's the full amount that we're asking for, less the building project that's not included here. So the difference in, on the expenditure side between twenty five and twenty four is one million four thirty four three oh four. And then you would subtract out that additional revenue of ninety seven thousand nine twenty eight. And then there's actually less adequacy aid that is being provided in FY twenty four, FY twenty five from FY twenty four. So that's actually an add, the double negative. Statewide property tax is an increase. So that gets reduced from that difference. So the total tax effort increased from FY twenty five to FY twenty four is one point three three eight million one eighty. And then you just divide that by the valuation that's provided by the town of Amherst. And the estimated tax rate is fifty six cents on the dollar. So any questions on that before I move on?
No.
From revenue, okay. I will say that one of the biggest pieces that we, we receive information on at the end of December. Is what our special education aid is. And so, once I get that in about a week or so, we may make some adjustments. For public hearing, if I have it in time. If not, we would make an adjustment between public hearing and deliberative. But typically it comes like right after Christmas.
So just as we wrap this up, just to, just to reframe, you know, Mike used the word responsible. You know, which I appreciate that word. The difference from last year to this year is one point four million, right, in expense? And Tom, you remember the number. But the, so what, what's happening in this budget for the first time is you're incorporating what was approved in the collective bargaining agreement last year. Six, seven? So now you're talking seven hundred thousand, the town voted to put in this budget, so now you're at seven hundred. Amy, I don't know what the numbers, Mike's trying to find it. How much was the twenty one point eight, just the health insurance increase?
Close to, it was almost eight hundred thousand, was seven hundred and ninety thousand, I think.
So you are talking about a flat budget. With, if you take what the town voted for the collective bargaining agreement, they said spend this next year. They told us to do that. I was there, I saw that. And the health insurance. So what drove this is collective bargaining, which was already approved in health. So everything else is, is in the noise. It's in the, so this is, you know. What Mike did and to work on some improvements in the area where you are actually, the expense is really health plus voted CBAs. Because Mike, there was a, I mean, Tom, there was a hundred that we did the ASSA. You might be under what was allocated last year in the CBAs with the twenty one point eight. Incredibly responsible, incredibly. I, I know there's not going to be thirty four hundred people voting, thirty two hundred people listening to this. But what this board did, what Mike did, was as bare minimum as you can with the twenty one point eight. And honoring the collective bargaining agreement that was voted last year. You with me? Just, when you're, soon you're gonna come up with a vote to send this to public hearing, right? Remember that, this is unbelievable.
So, and I, so thanks for that, Steve. I just want to clarify that I'm looking at these slides. So the default, then, the proposed default's two point eight. Right? The increase at the proposed default, like FY twenty, like if we were in default. Oh, still a two point eight percent increase. But we're really talking about one percent, right? It's, it's three point eight with the proposed, it would still be, it was because of the CBA and the, right? Am I?
Yeah.
Okay.
In my world. The default is breaking a deal that this community had on the collective bargaining agreements that they voted last year. You'd be funding less than what they voted on last year. And that's not good business.
Just, so, health insurance and year two of the contract do not roll over to the default. That has to be, it's not in the default for FY twenty five, but it will be for FY twenty six because it's already been voted upon.
So, say that again? So health insurance?
So health insurance.
Non-union.
For union, the twenty one point eight percent, that eight hundred thousand and then a six hundred and fifty thousand for the AEA contract and seventy thousand for ASSA. Call it one point five million overall. That is not included in the default for FY twenty five? I thought that it was.
That's included in the default, yeah.
So you're cutting other areas.
Gotcha.
So you're on the happy, that would be the fall.
Yeah.
Cutting everything else. Cutting other things.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So the building funding, Amy.
Yes.
And this does, by the way, if you're looking at the agenda ticking off items, that we are jumping around a little bit now, just because it flows naturally with the budget conversation. So bond funding, reserve funding, those are going to be part of this particular segment, so. And we'll get into the public hearing or the bond hearing after this part, Shannon.
Yeah, so what we talked about was Article eighteen, which is the budget. This is Article twelve. And this is for the school building project.
I just, do we want to make a motion now on Article thirteen or?
They're all at the end.
Okay, got it.
So because the, I think you want to also talk about the other warrant articles before you do that. So. I did get some information for you to take a look at potential financing options. So the, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank provided us with. Level, level principal and level debt options for both twenty five years and thirty years. So those options are in the deck. The first one is level principal for twenty five years. Some things to note on here, the total cost, which is in the upper right hand corner. The interest rate and the term. And then below, I have the, the. I guess sort of the amortization for the estimated tax impact and the estimated costs for the average home, which is, we use four hundred and eighty two thousand. So that first year is just based on that interest amount, so it's fifty two cents on the dollar, so it's two fifty two. And then with the level principal, this is where you, you have that sort of waterfall going down where it starts out high. And then it slowly goes down as it amortizes. So that chart is provided, they're quoting us a five point five percent interest rate. They said their most recent bond sale was three point six six percent, but they like to be very conservative. So they're, we're using the five point five percent at this point. So the next option is level debt. And again, you'll see the total cost, so the level principal cost is eighty five million. The level debt cost is, is more, it's ninety three. The benefit to this is you have a, a stable tax rate amount, starting in year two. So year one is the same. And then year two, the estimated tax impact is a dollar fifty five and the estimated cost is seven forty seven. And again, that's the same interest rate and term of twenty five years. And then we also got a thirty year term level principal. That total cost up in the right hand corner, a little over ninety four million. The interest rate they quoted was five point seven five. They said their most recent bond sale was four point oh nine percent, but again, using five point seven five to be conservative. This also has the waterfall effect, so it starts at a dollar eighty eight. Or nine oh six and goes down through, I just had through FY thirty four on here, to a dollar fifty two and seven thirty three. And then the final option is again thirty years. The total cost is the highest for this option at one oh five eight seven eight nine six four. Again, five point seven five percent interest rate. And this is the, the, the level tax rate option at a dollar forty seven or seven oh nine per year. So those are the options for the board to consider. And you can decide if you want to decide before public hearing or, or, you know, it's really up to you. I think last year you did have a decision made. Yeah, of course.
Just as a reminder, real quick, what we talked about last year, the, the, the stable, the level debt. Whether you're here for year one or year twenty four, you pay the same amount. In level principal, if you live in Amherst year one, you pay much more than someone who was here twenty years later. Right? And so that's, this is equal distribution throughout your time versus paying more early in the bond and, and less later on the bond. And that was the discussion we had, equitability and fairness versus in. The difference between twenty five and thirty. On one thing Amy and I talked about is a monthly, like looking at monthly, is a dollar a month. You save five years, you're not five years off your term for a dollar a month. So there's no way that thirty years is the way to go.
No, that's fair.
Certainly with the level principal, level debt, something that I know is focused on is the total cost. So there's the difference between those two. So you have the stable tax rate where you're paying more versus not as much and you're paying less. So we just provide these for the board's consideration.
Terry, you had a question?
Yeah, so. I'm a little bit curious why they're quite so conservative on their estimate when I know that. The feds have already, have already announced that they plan to cut interest rates at least four times over the next year. That that's the plan and things can change, but that is what they've already communicated. And so I'm wondering why they're feeling the need to be quite so conservative in their estimate for our rates. If their most recent ones are in the threes and they're telling me, you know, two percent more, I, I'm having trouble understanding that.
I think the Hampshire Bond Bank will lose all credibility if the number they is, the number that they quote is too low. They go in high to make sure it's very conservative. I think they do it extra early when they're watching the sales. You could do it, if you, you could shave a half a point or a point, but that's gonna like, it's all risk now. I have a tough time not using the experts.
It, it's a question, not a, a criticism, it's.
They sell themselves as conservative, they never want it higher, you know, they never want a rate to be higher than what they quoted.
And I, they're really great to work with. I, I email them constantly. Ask if there's any changes, so, you know, certainly if they felt that there was a change, I know that they would let us know, even as we go through the process.
Okay, so is there any chance by the time we actually make it to public hearing, the, these may be any different?
Public hearing, no.
It's only a couple of weeks away. I, I think it's also probably not the most calm time in the world either. I mean, I think it's probably, they're building in some, some volatility and I don't know when you got these numbers, Amy, but the Fed only announced this last week. If this came in eight days ago, it probably didn't even beat the. Fed's announcement that they weren't gonna do anywhere between four times next year. So I, I think maybe by deliberative, we have a better estimate.
I guess that's.
I think it's still smart to leave it.
I think he might for deliberative.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's still six weeks away. My, I, I will make a comment here that my biggest regret voting last year was going with level debt. So I will say that I am vehemently opposed to that. I, I know Steve's point on the equitability and fairness of it, but eight million dollars is eight million dollars. And that's taxpayer money, so, which is partly my money, so.
Yeah, so I would agree with you, Tom, and that was going to be my comment. Yeah, so I would agree with you, Tom. That was going to be my comment. I am, and I wasn't on the board last year for that vote, but I, I would support level principal. Um, I, I understand the stabilization of the tax rate, you know, but in that first year when you're paying more, you're also paying more and you have a brand new, you know, school building, right? So, like $8 million, um, that's real money. And it, yeah, I just, I can't, I, I'm, I'm a level principal gal. So, that's, that's where I would go with that.
I would say last year, um, we had reasons that we landed on leveled up, but I have swung back over to level principal as well. That is just, I'm with 25 years rather than 30, but, um, but with, right now, looking at, at the total numbers, that one that makes most sense to me. And honestly, if these are the people voting to, to build the school, then, then they can bear a little higher at the beginning, um, because they helped make that decision. So, I'm okay with that.
Do you want to tell, do we want to do a motion to go with that funding mechanism, the level principal as opposed to level debt? Just to have it on the record?
Sure. I'd be willing to, um, to do the 25-year level principal. Yes, level principal.
Funding for the bonds.
Funding for the.
There we go. I'll take a second on that.
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. So, I, I, we'll, we'll vote on this, but before we vote on the rest of the Warren articles, we do have Ways and Means here tonight. So, I will bring, uh, Caitlin forward if she has comments and questions on that. So, be, just, just so you know, we're not ignoring you. But before we vote on the articles, we'll, we'll have you come up and ask any questions that you might have. And, um, then you'll be able to take our votes back to the rest of Ways and Means. So, you guys can continue to do your work. So, just to let you know that we're, we do have that intent to do it tonight as we, uh, bounce around the agenda a little bit here. Um, so on this particular motion for, uh, 25 years of the level principal, all in favor? One, two, three, four. So, we have that, Amy. Uh, we can go forward with that process. When, uh, was that the last thing that you had on there, Amy? Or did you have anything else? Oh, we wanted to talk about, uh, state building aid.
Oh, we can do that. Sure.
We'll do that. And then we can just talk about overall public hearing and the presentation for the bond hearing and then for the budget as well.
Okay, yeah. And then I have a summary of the Warren articles.
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, I want you to decide on the order of them.
Yep. That'll be part of that. We'll do that after Ways and Means.
Yep. And then, um, after that, vote to move the Warren articles to public here. Okay, great.
Um, so, state building aid. Did you want to provide an update on that?
Sure. I can, I can start and then Steve can fill in a bit. Um, so, yeah, we, since this project uh, was revised quite a bit, I've been communicating with the New Hampshire Department of Education to let them know that, um, that work was happening. And once we had, uh, a plan that the board was planning to move forward as well as revised drawings and site plan, um, we needed to provide an updated, just a, an abbreviated part of the application to the, uh, to the department to see if the project was still eligible to stay in the queue, um, for state building aid. As a reminder, we had ranked seventh, um, in the projects that had applied. So, we did receive word back that because the project had, uh, had changed, where we were no longer consolidating Clark and Wilkins. Um, Clark would still exist, that we were not able to, um, stay in the queue, um, for building aid. So, we would need to, uh, if we move forward with that project, then we would need to reapply for state building aid. And the next application date is April, uh, due date is April 1st, 2025. And we would be, uh, we would find out, um, I think in July, when the state budget passes moving forward. And Steve can fill in, um, as far as.
Just a little context. So, last year we were seven. Um, Rochester and Menadnock voted, passed, and have received building aid. Okay, so that was two of the six in front of us. You with me? Uh, Rochester and Menadnock, um, there, uh, Amy received a communication. So, after the Menadnock and Rochester received their building aid, there's $13 million left in the biennium budget. You with me? They budget this biennium. You with me? So, there's three people ahead of us. Colebrook. Um, and their request, and Amy can, or someone can kick me under the table, I think was, uh, state building aid was about 9 million. Litchfield, pretty close to 9 million, I think. And then you had Derry. And the question, so I, yesterday I listened to Derry's presentation, $71 million school consolidation. Um, and on their last slide, it said March vote, 2024. I didn't stay whether or not the board actually sent it, but I saw it on their slide. And so, that's 71 million, 30% of 71 million is 21 million, something like that. So, um, there's 13 million left in the bucket. Colebrook, and Mike and I talked about this, like, Colebrook, which is wonderful, is guaranteed building aid. First, if they pass theirs. They can go to their town or deliberative and say that, right, isn't interesting? Because there's nine, 13 million left. They're number one, nine. They're asking for nine. That's a pretty good incentive for them to bang it out and vote it, because they may never be ranked number one again. And then you got Litchfield, and Litchfield, we believe, is going.
Yeah.
Um, and that's an elementary project. And then you've got Derry. Now, there's other, one other missing district ahead of us is Concord School District. You know, I live right outside of Concord. I follow it, the union leader quite, I'm sorry, the monitor quite a bit. Um, they're looking at, um, next time, putting in a $175 million middle school project. Um, this year, they spent a lot of time on site. It's whether build at the same site or go into the woods and, and, and blow down trees. If they're broke, if you're interested, they're actually blowing down trees, which the community doesn't like in Concord, but anyway. So, they're not going this year, which makes sense because there's not enough building aid to help them. But they are ahead. And if they, you know, if they do put an application again, because it's a whole new round. What, you know, one would say we're ahead when we were doing the consolidation. You with me? And so, one would say if we go back to the consolidation or figure this all out, they'd probably be ahead, which means there's probably not going to be a lot of building aid anyway. You're picking up what I'm putting down. So, that's 13 million this year, a couple ahead. Concord's still ahead of us. 175 million is what's monitors planned with. Not all that's building aid because of, but, so that's where we are. Does that help?
No, that's, that's incredibly helpful. There's, sounds like there would be zero left. I mean, 13 million and what, yeah.
Sorry. Yep.
All right. Just making sure I kept up because that went pretty quick. So, even if we were to say, screw it, we're going backwards somehow, and we're going to go back to consolidating, the, the trade-off wouldn't, wouldn't get us anything most likely. And we will definitely reapply and we will probably definitely get on the list again, but just not on the current list. So, even if we stayed on the current list, there's probably no money left for us regardless. So, it will neither hurt nor help to be where we are. And we will absolutely apply again and then see where we land the next time. And so.
The only guarantee right now is that with this project, we don't have any chance of any building aid. That's the only guarantee that we have right now. We, we, yeah, correct. With, with this project in March of 2024, there is a guarantee that we will not qualify for any building aid.
But there, but, but we are promising that we will reapply to try to be in the next pool of money.
Correct.
And we have already had much experience in putting together our application and a whole lot of the work is done. And so, that will go a little bit smoother this time. And we have shown our diligence in asking for anything we can get. So, even though we don't have a promise of any money right now, we will absolutely ask for money again. Okay.
Correct.
So, I have a couple of questions. If you'll indulge, and I don't even know if these are answerable. Um, so, have we received any feedback from the state? So, obviously, we took consolidation out. Was that going to, in the next biennium, lower our ranking in theory, right? Did we get points assigned to us for that? And because we've changed the project, are we likely to be even lower on the list, depending on what other projects are presented in the state? I guess, oh, we, would we lose points, however, through their system?
They did indicate that that was, um, that definitely helped our application in terms of points. So, we, we don't receive, uh, points for free and reduced lunch. Um, but this, we did receive points for that. The consolidation. That was an important factor for them in terms of efficiency.
Estate money, they want to use to create efficiencies, to reduce overhead and, and support community sustaining education long-term. They do, you know, they have a stake in this. It's state money. So, they, they watch very carefully. And consolidation going back to actually when South Heagan, right? The cooperative got 40% versus a single district, 30%. Consolidating schools. Derry actually is consolidating schools. They're closing a school. Concord, when they got their last huge project, they closed three schools. They, right, they, they, um, they closed a lot. And that's why they got tons of building aid. So, yeah, the state has been clear, as part of this process, consolidation is a, um, something they support to gain efficiencies and help value in the future. So, taking that out. Now, depending on what you did, you could also go K through four. You could consolidate a K through four project. And, you know, I'm loving that because, you know, the space that we now talked about, we, we gotta get a bump over at AMS. But, you know, I mean, there is ways to consolidate even the smaller.
And we don't get any points for bringing fifth grade out of the middle school. They don't consider that.
Because that doesn't close the school.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
I'm not.
Yeah.
There's no advocacy here, just chat.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm.
And then I guess, kind of my other question is like a process question. So, let's say, right, we've obviously already voted for a public hearing. Let's just say we then have to public hearing vote to put this to deliberative and it goes on, it's a bond and it passes. But we're not applying for, at that point, are we then no longer applying for building aid? Because, like, what does that look like? Can we get, like, back pay? I, I'm just curious as to what that, because I think that's a question that will come up.
And, and we could get, this is what bond council's for too, but I don't know of any mechanism to accept state aid after the bond. I mean, you'd have to go private financing because you can't take 20 million and pay down the first.
Can't prepay.
Right, can't prepay a, a bond. Private financing. I don't know of. And, you know, the, the, their project is you get approval, you get aid.
So, essentially, we'd just be waiting another year before we can start any construction and sell the bonds, because we have to wait until 2025 to see if we got aid. So, if we put it on the ballot in March and it gets approved, we're not breaking ground for probably two years at that point. I guess we could get everything lined up to go Ju, July 1st if we get building aid. And if we do, we can still be ready to go and knowing we have it, but we're not doing anything until 2025.
And, and to be completely honest, Concord's way ahead of us for the next biennium.
I mean, here's the, here, here's my, my challenge with that kind of train of thought is with the plan that was developed last year, which was an excellent plan, fully supported that plan, consolidated our bill, like, it gave us everything we needed, right? Our plan this year is a response to our community, to try to thread the needle of what the community has told us they can bear and still allow us to provide what our students and teachers need, right? Like, that's the, like, the tension point that we're at. But the plan last year was the plan that, you know, the state liked because it checked a lot of their boxes. It's the plan that gets us, you know, the consolidated school that solves all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing issues, all of that. Um, and it's not getting aid this year when we're in the best possible spot we could get. So, now we're saying, oh, but we're going to wait with this plan that doesn't consolidate, which we know the school likes, that's less money, right? And now we're going to wait two more years where we're going to deal with cost escalation. And we're going to apply for aid and we know we're probably not going to have as many point, like, to me, state aid is, yes, we need to aggressively pursue every avenue for funding possible. But I, if we can't get state aid with the project we had last year and community support with the project we had last year, is it, is this a pipe dream, I guess, is kind of my, my question. Like.
Yes.
Am I wrong? Am I just, I, I, you know, I feel like to wait on this, like, it's like a unicorn to me, right? Like, I just don't know that it's going to, that we're going to be in a, any better, like, I feel like the position we were in with last year's project was like the best place we could be. And if those other schools had fallen off or, you know, something like, you know, like, if you came in here tonight and said, guess what, guys, if we, you know, if we kept the plan we had, we were at number two, we could get some, then I would, great, right? Like, maybe that's what we should be doing. But even if we go with that, we're, you know, I, so, I mean, I think it's important. I think we have to talk about it. I think we have to share all this with our community. But I don't know that holding out for state aid when we're in the position that we're in and we're, you know, really unlikely to get it anyway is, is realistic.
Yeah, Shannon, I mean, I, I tend to agree with you. I guess I'm, I was asking the question just to try to, yeah, get, get clarity. But I, I agree with you. I think that we'll be in a weaker position in the next biennium in terms of state aid, you know, going forward with this plan. But like you said, we're also trying to be responsive to the community, right? They told us no and they gave us a number of reasons as to why they said no. Um, so, I'm with you. I, I, I agree. I, I don't think that there's, unless some miracle were to happen, I don't think there's any real possibility of us receiving state aid. But I think we said that even with the previous plan. We said, like, hey, state aid is an exceptional long shot, right? Like, there's not necessarily even a large pool of money for it, considering all the projects that, that districts are putting out there.
We tried last year, we had last year's legislative breakfast, tried to advocate, trying to get more state, with a limited pool, because remember, they still have to pay off what's called the tail, right? There's still 20-year, 15-year bonds that they're paying off. It's not all new projects because they're having, you know, there was a gap. There's a moratorium on building aid for so long, right? The, what would help is if, if the state put $200 million in the budget. Yeah, I think, what was last year, 50? 50 million plus the tail?
Yeah, I believe so.
We need like 200 million. There's literally hundreds of millions of dollars of backlog. And, you know, who are the next projects that's going to come? Now, I just think if I was, you know, Colebrook, Mike and I talked about, this is their best shot to do it. But schools have done it. Uh, Salem, hundreds of million dollars, no building aid. New Market, 43 million dollars, no building aid. Oyster River, no building aid. Hopkinton, 10.4 million, no building. The schools have, have gone because they, you know, the, this, you could wait three years, four years, and the escalation's going to be the same as building it. You know, 6% times that's 3 million, that's 12 million. Talking $3 million difference in building. So, all this. And I love, I mean, I, you know, I've, I've been a pretty loud opponent. Governor John Lynch, Democrat, got rid of building it. Got rid of retirement, got rid of, um, CTE, got rid of all this stuff. And no one put it back. Um, it used to be an entitlement. All you do is pass it and you were guaranteed it. And New Hampshire was proud of that. It was great for the economy. Building is good. People, less job. Sorry that New Hampshire doesn't.
Okay. Again, I, I don't know, it's, I, to me, that's not contingent upon a vote. I don't think there's anything we have to vote on. It's just more of an informative, uh, bit. It's more informative for us and to carry that forward in the public hearing, to be able to explain that, um, in the bond hearing and then in the public hearing as well, the, the following night in January. So, uh, anything else, Amy, that we need to, to cover on your side of it?
Um, no, I think we're up to, um, I, I, I guess.
I'm going to hold off on voting on the Warren articles at this point. Let's have Caitlin, if you'd like to. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know if you, we wanted to talk though, because we did change the Warren articles. So, I don't know.
Okay, let's, uh.
Talk about that.
What did we change? In terms of the order, the.
Well, the order you, you folks need to decide on, but, yeah, go to. Yeah, that's good. So, this is the, the proposed order. So, the bond goes first, then the budget. Then we had the capital reserve fund. Um, that hasn't changed. That was 675. Um, in an effort to try to, uh, and looking at what we felt we were comfortable projecting for fund balance and looking to try to keep the tax rate, um, as, as level as possible. We did shave off 25,000 from the technology expendable re-trust fund. So, that's down from 100 to 75. And we shaved a little bit off of the vehicle expendable trust fund from 40 to 30. So, that was in an effort to, um, keep that tax rate in the, um, in that mid 50 cent-ish range.
And so, when we saw that slide for 780 before, that was not building aid only, that was not capital reserve for buildings. That was all the capital reserve funds that we were looking at.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Prior to this budget presentation, it was at 815. So.
Okay.
So, this is the, this is the slide.
Yeah, correct.
This isn't beautiful. This isn't wonderful. Because you're swallowing a lot of reduced revenue. You're increasing your voted to fund balance, I mean, to Warren articles, by $175,000. That's $175,000. That's not going back to the taxpayer reserve taxes. It's going to spend. And you're reducing your amount going to taxpayers by 300 and, 300, almost, almost $400,000. So, um, $230,000 is 10 cents on the tax rate. So, this is 30 cents on the tax rate. So, this is what people don't, like, in my life, you cut $400,000 from the budget. You just didn't revenue, not expense. It's the same thing. So, when you went 772 to 385, we cut $400,000 from the budget. Now, this, this community, for some strange reason, is only focused on the expense side. But, but what matters is your tax bill. This has equal impact on your. But, but what matters is your tax bill. This has equal impact on your tax rate. The only difference is they throw Sahhegan in there, so no one really know. But on the warrant in Amherst, this is what it's going to say. Now, next year, if the three eighty five goes up to seven seventy, you just save four hundred grand. We love it. I love it when more goes back to the test. And this is the conversation Tom that Tim wants to have about tax rate stabilization. That's what he wants to have an account, like I had my former district that had eight hundred thousand bucks. So if this was where I used to work and there was a deficit of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of revenue, I would have put three hundred thousand dollars from this savings account in there. And it would have been the same thing as spending, you know, saving three hundred thousand dollars and cutting. So the board would have said, Steve, we want to cut. I said, no, we're going to take more revenue. Um, and that's the advantage of having, because we don't like four hundred thousand dollar swings. That's not fun. We like stable, stable. People like to predict. Um, but as, as Mike and I've talked and Amy and I've talked, you don't have any money to save. You're spending every dime. You're spending seven hundred eighty thousand dollars on Warren articles. That's what keeps Amy up at night. Cause what happens if we don't have seven eighty thousand dollars? It's not fun. And then, cause that goes before the three eighty five. But last year, because this board very, I appreciate it and you should get a lot of credit in this wonderful community. You should get a lot of, a lot of credit for all that revenue that came in and increased adequacy, went right back to the taxpayer. We said fifty six cents last year. It was like twenty four cents. Their tax bill, you guys should have got, well, say, hey, you lowered our taxes last year. Which not many people do, by the way, like other districts within our catchment area, neighboring us spent them. You guys returned the taxpayer. So this is the revenue portion of, of, but it's the right thing to do so Amy can sleep. Otherwise, if she doesn't sleep, we all have problems. Sorry.
No, thank you, Steve. I appreciate the, uh, the further explanation on that. So anybody have any comments in terms of the order of those articles, twelve through sixteen?
You, you can't change twelve and thirteen.
You cannot.
You cannot.
Okay, that was, I was curious if there's a, you, the bond has to be first.
Yep, the bond has to be first, the budget has to be second. So it's just the, it's the others that you can, you could play with.
And the fund balance retention is the item that's on the agenda in terms of what Steve just referenced, keeping money instead of returning it to taxpayers on a yearly basis, building up essentially a savings account and then being able to use it to offset that revenue.
And I have a sample warrant article there in case the board wants to talk about that and do that.
I am not a fan of that. I know that the town has done it. Um, I am much happier just continuing to, to send the money back to taxpayers on a yearly basis, but I'm open to other comments from other board members on that piece. I know Tim is encouraging us to, uh, look at, it was RSA, I had it written down, just bear with me, one ninety four. One ninety eight four B two, allowing a legislative body to retain unassigned fund balance. And you can use up to five percent of any given year, a total assessment to be used for emergencies or years of high expenses and lower revenue like this. Uh, our assessment's just over twenty three million, which means that we could retain about one point one million to use as a rainy day fund, should you have that much money available at the end of the year. So the town has built up roughly five and a half million doing this, uh, over the course of the last decade or so. So thoughts on that?
My initial thought is the town has been pretty successful passing, passing their warrant articles. So I, I think there's something to that. I think that one thing that I've heard many times over the years is, don't we have a fund? Why don't we have money saved up? I like stabilizing, the, the idea of being able to stabilize the tax rate. And I also think that, you know, when our budgets are approved, that's, I mean, they're approved, right? Like our, I don't know. That, that's just my initial thought. I don't listen to everybody else.
Sorry.
I feel like it's already a lot and we're already adding to more trust funds. I would be in favor of maybe putting off a year, having to explain yet one more thing that we're adding. And I would like to be more focused. So I'm not against it on general principle. I see the value of it. But I'm hesitant to add one more thing to have to explain, talk about and vote on um, right now, because I really, really want to get a budget passed. And I think people already sort of understand the trust funds. They get that and, and being able to say that this is like the town. But again, it's just that much more explanation we have to do, right? And so I'd rather focus our, our time with our voters on things that they are familiar with from us and, and do the other two trust funds that I think are important to start. And then, um, pick this up next year when there's hopefully a little bit less on the ballot.
Jason, any thoughts from you?
I'm a little conflicted about it. I kind of, I, I think I understand everybody's points. I guess the part I'm conflicted is because I remember hearing, I don't know if it was last year, I think it was last year, people say like, you keep coming to us for more money, but we already gave you money. Um, so that part makes me look conflicted, like, okay, you gave us this money, so we'll, we'll hang on to it and we'll retain it and we'll, and we'll use it. At the same time, you know, I do want to be respectful and, and show that we're being fiscally cheap. And, um, you know, returning every, every penny that we can. So I know it's, it's, so I'm, I'm personally can, a little conflicted on it. Just because it does help, like, so could we use this? Let's say we went into default. Could we use this to supplement? Like something that we couldn't pay for because we were in default.
So I, I looked at the statute because the statute's changed since it started. At the, at the very first statute, they said you could use it as a, uh, emergency fund, emergency approved by others. This statute, the, the Roman number one was a contingency fund and Roman number two was the savings for tax rate. But I think Tim would say that you can, I don't have the, I don't have the statute in front of me. But it's supposed to be, you know, it's the, the goal is tax rate stabilization, but I think you can use it as a contingent. But I'd have to ask, we never did. And it was, because we had maintained, like you have seven hundred thousand dollars maintenance. So if you lose a boiler, you have it, you don't go there. Um, I don't think it would be prudent to use it for default alleviation because they voted for the default level and now you're using, I think that would be breaking their trust. The, so here's the, what, what's funky. And this is, so I don't know if you remember, Goffstown, a community near us, didn't track their fund balance and they had to return a one point eight million dollars more in fund balance. And so their tax bill was really low, but next year, everybody got really mad. But if they had this, the board could say, we're going to put eight hundred grand in it. Like I just leaned over very rudely and said to Amy, I've never, you know, this place hasn't seen a twenty one point eight health insurance. That's the guaranteed maximum. It, I wouldn't, you know, in my old life, I would never say this, and this is hammer, where nothing really great happens like this. But if it came to ten, what if we got the actual was ten? Then you have four hundred, don't quote me, this is like a super ish, like the biggest issue I can give. But let's say it's four hundred thousand dollars more. Right? Because eight hundred is twenty and half of that's four hundred, but no, because Amy would say no, Steve, but let's say it's four hundred. The budget's done, you have four hundred grand. That's four hundred grand right now, you're either going to spend it on projects, which I love, by the way, I'm big, that make me very happy furniture, furniture, furniture. Right? Or it's going back to the taxpayer. But next year, so now you're turning back eight hundred thousand. But next year you can only do three hundred. They're irritating. Or you could take that force, shove it in there and save it in the bank because you've already made your, you already, your word is good. It's a savings mechanism when you have a windfall. Like it's a windfall, everybody. If we go, GMR goes down ten percent. And if we find that out before, we can talk to the board, like you always want to be honest with people. But right now you'd only have one choice to turn it back. And if you were turning seven hundred back this year and you've got a, a GMR and now you're going to one point one million, you've killed yourself next budget. If you can only turn back six hundred thousand dollars, you are starting the budget process with half a million dollar tax rate deficit. That kills you. You pay it for five hundred, you didn't, you didn't start with, you, you save it for the next time. You now have a surplus that you can use to balance the tax rate and take care of if you have twenty one point eight. But Adam and I used to talk about this because I was, it's sometimes regional. In central Hampshire, everybody has. Western, no one has. Like I read the minutes of three board meetings, just like Tom said, we're going to give the money back to the people we're not saving them. Uh, and Adam, Adam was regional. He goes, no, we don't do it this area. Concord area, do it.
So then I have another question. So let's just say in theory, we were said, you know, yeah, we want to do this. We, um, went ahead and did, and we started saving money. The interest, I'm assuming there'd be interest associated with it. Is the interest something that we can then use differently or is the interest still stay in that?
Years' interest was nothing. Now it's some, so I honestly, I don't have a great answer for you, Jason, because it wasn't even money to speak of when it's point zero zero two, but now it's real money. I suspect it's got to stay in the, in the stabilization fund.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a great question.
Yep.
I don't think there's going to be a lot of money unless you get a GMR break.
Which I don't think we're going to get because they already say that it's twenty one point eight. They've told us it's what the rate we've got to break from twenty one point nine to.
You already got the break.
I think the break has already come.
Oh, no.
I think with ten million in claims, I don't think your break is, is happening. I think it's already broken, so.
But it's also, this authorizes the board, does not require them. It authorizes you to save money and then the board, the board has to take a vote. You vote every year in June, you've got four hundred thousand dollars, you have three choices. Fund balance, tax rate, projects or tax rate stabilization. Now you have two choices. Project or tax rate. And the board can ask for authorization and I'm not sure this is the year. I mean, I don't, you guys know the climate much more than me, but it's only asking for authorization and that means you can do it and you don't have to. There's some years they didn't save a dime in my past. And they got up to over a million. A little town, that was five percent of their budget. They had an extra revenue. I was just looking at, so I was looking at some stuff, they, they dropped four hundred grand this year on, on a, out of tax rate stabilization.
Yeah, I guess with that caveat, it does help me a little bit. With that caveat, it makes it a little bit more appealing because it's not a definite. It just gives you more choices on the table.
It's a contingent, I mean, it's.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand what you're saying, Terry.
Does somebody want to make a motion to create this article and to have us create this contingency fund? Under RSA one ninety eight four B dash two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Does anybody have a second?
I'll second.
I, yeah, there is an article on slide twenty nine. I did write the warrant article.
Okay.
Yep.
So the article as Amy has crafted it would be, shall the Amherst School District vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded to retain year round unassigned general funds in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year, five percent of the current fiscal year's net assessment in accordance with RSA one ninety eight four B comma two. Such fund balance retained may only be expended after conducting a public hearing by the governing body in accordance with RSA one ninety eight four B. So similar to what we did tonight for the capital reserve fund. Is there any other question, any other comments on this? If we vote on this, this would go on the article, it would go on the warrant for March. And this would give us the option to discuss, do we want to add any funds to it in June? Uh, and then we could have that yearly conversation. Um, to me, it's a shell game, but I, you know.
So Tom, I, these would just be moved to public hearing at this point.
Correct. Thank you. So these would be moved to public hearing. So this would be moved to public hearing at this point. Do we want to take a vote?
I think it's a worthy conversation to have at public hearing, you know, especially if the town's already doing it. And it's providing us another mechanism to be fiscally responsible with the tax dollars that, you know, there, so.
All right. So all in favor, uh, Jason, you want to amend your motion to move it to public hearing? Uh, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, Shannon, you want to amend it just to move it to public hearing? I think we just said to, I don't know, we added that part on there.
I said it, I don't think I said either way, but sure, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, who wants to second that?
Second again.
Thank you. Just we're, because we're qualifying to put, move it to public hearing as opposed to the warrant. So, um, would that, all in favor? Two, four, against? Two against? What world do we do with a tie? That not move forward, does not move forward. Okay. Does not move forward for public hearing. So that is that. Article seventeen is off. So before we vote on articles twelve through sixteen, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Ways and Means. We can have Caitlin come up, uh, with any questions or comments she might have before we take a vote on the final articles, uh, twelve through sixteen as they are crafted. Now, the one in the front, Caitlin, a little, there you go.
Great, thank you. I was feverishly trying to jot down notes since you were going to those slides, because I don't have the, uh, I don't have a laptop in front of me. So, um, apologize if I was over there on my phone. Just a couple of questions on maybe the funding, the state funding discussion, uh, as it relates to the building project. How engaged are our state representatives in helping us advocate for any available state funding?
Believe we've discussed that with them twice at different sessions. One was last October, a year ago, October, and then one was September of this year. Um, so we, we have had conversations with them about, uh, advocating for that, just increasing the overall pool of building aids. We have had conversations with all four of them.
Okay. Uh, and then. No, I guess, but it's just staying in tune to what's available out there in case there's something that they might be hearing at their sessions that, you know, you all are not privy to necessarily.
Yeah, and, and our conversations have expanded beyond just the building aid, but it was for that purpose of, you know, what, you know, what things are on our, our minds that we would like to see maybe as agenda, uh, agenda items for them and then vice versa. They're keeping us in, uh, up to date as to what is coming down the pike and, and other ways that, other things that might be of interest to a school district.
So it's a biennial budget? So we advocated for it before the state budget was made.
Right.
Then it's set and then we start that again. So we, we, we remind them and try to get some flexibility, but we can't impact the budget until next.
Okay.
So that makes sense.
Yep.
Um, and then Amy, do you mind going back to the slide that had the thirty four point eight million at the top? I was trying to reconcile, uh, yeah.
This one?
Yes. So how does that thirty four point eight reconcile to the thirty four oh five five school budget? I, I know it says it includes warrant articles. So does that include the capital reserve fund?
Yep, all the warrant articles.
The tech and the car.
Yep.
For vehicles.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then on the, uh, the warrant articles for the reserve fund or the trust fund, there was an asterisk there saying.
This one?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, saying that the source of funding is the unassigned fund balance. So will that have an impact to tax rate?
Yes. Yep. Um, if you want to go back to the revenue slide.
This one?
Yeah, we can start there. So, so voted from fund balance, that's seven eighty, that's the total of the warrant articles, the six seventy five, the seventy five and the thirty. Um, and those would be funded if available from the FY twenty four fund balance. Um, and then we, uh, project what would be available to offset the tax rate. So that's the three.
Oh, I see. So that fund balance is not yet in existence.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That's this year. It's whatever is left at the end of this year.
Okay. Um, I think. And then maybe just more of a comment, because I know we talked about this, um, with Tom, you and Jason at our Ways and Means meeting, and I think was mentioned today, just the, the double approval process that has to happen because of the collective bargaining agreement that was approved last year. It's now included in this budget, has to be voted on again. Um, I think that's an important distinction to make to the community that, you know, almost half of the increase that we are proposing, if this is the kind of near final budget that is, you know, included in the warrant articles, that almost half of that increase has already been approved by the taxpayers a year ago. Um, so just breaking it down like that might be helpful for the community.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, do you want me to give away the means update?
Yeah, you can do that as well.
Okay. Uh, so we met, uh, our last meeting was a week ago on the twelfth. Um, we had a pretty robust discussion with, um, Tom and Jason. Thank you for, um, being there as well as Steve. Um, we had a pretty robust discussion with um, Tom and Jason. Thank you for um, being there as well as Steve, just to answer our questions real time. I think that was really helpful for us to have a good discussion, give our feedback. Uh, we specifically focused on the budget as well as the school project and the option two that was voted on by the board at the meeting prior. Um, so we did have just some some general feedback there. We did update the website for our Ways and Means mission statement, just to more accurately reflect what the current committee thought. Our purposes. Um, we also made a recommendation, uh, just in general to have as friendly of a summary. Of all of the budgets as possible. I know there's lengthy presentations with all of the details. Community members are just not going to spend the time to go through it like all of you have. So if there's a way just to have a one pager that says, here's the information you need to know in order to for you to make an informed decision. Um, we thought that would be very helpful for the community. And that's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. And thank you for all the Ways and Means work as well. Alright, so I think uh, we're up to the point now where we can vote to move these articles, review the language, and then vote to move them to public hearing. Before we do that, though, we still have to vote on the budget, correct, Amy? Or by, if we vote on the warrant article, is that approving the budget to move to public hearing?
Yes.
If that's what we're committed to at that point.
Yep, and and I'll say um, approve them as they're written. Um, I have to submit them to Department of Revenue for a pre-review.
Sure.
I'm not expecting changes, but there could be some minor things, but.
Okay.
But it's fine, so.
But if we approve Article thirteen, that is approving that as our budget.
Yeah, to move forward to public hearing.
We have to take, essentially, we just have to take two votes on it to approve the budget as is, and then to approve the wording. We can do it all in one shot. Um, Shannon, before we do that, do you have anything in particular you want to talk about with Article twelve? We'll go through in order twelve through sixteen. Um, we can talk certainly presentations after we vote on these, but anything else you'd like to cover on the facilities piece of this?
No, I think we've covered it all with the, yeah, funding and.
Okay, so we'll go through one by one, twelve through sixteen. I will take a motion to approve Article twelve as written and move it on to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I get a motion from Jason. Terry with a second. Any further discussion? Okay, alright, yeah, this is Article twelve, Steve. Alright, all in favor of moving Article twelve to the public hearing as worded, as written rather? One, two, three. All against? Shannon was a yes or no. You cut your finger.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm, I actually, I have a question before, can we go back?
Yeah, I think so. I think we can ask a question, sure.
Okay, um, so, and I know why it's worded like this, um, and renovation project for the Wilkins Elementary School. I just want to. Um, because are, the D O E considers it Clark Wilkins, I think. And I just want to make sure there's not going to be a hiccup. I'm sure legal has or will review the language, but that would be my concern with it saying Wilkins. When New Hampshire E D, that's what they're called now, right, recognizes us as Clark Wilkins. And I don't know if that's something we. Right, right, so do, and I may, I I may be way too over analyzing, I just. Yeah, I just want to make sure, but it's we're approving language. Building this thing. Yeah. Because Clark isn't, so I can ask.
There's some of the minor language might change in here, but the the principle of the. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, are we wordsmithing right now? I guess that's really my question. Okay, we're just intent.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, I'm good to go. To D R A and legal for final. She's, she wrote most of this, but but I will, I will ask that question. Okay.
Okay.
Says eighty, Boston Post Road, we like to add this there too.
Yeah.
You like, I like the.
Yeah, yep, the. You're right, yeah, 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 okay.
So now we'll take our vote. All in favor, one, two, three, four, and none opposed. Article thirteen now, this is our budget as presented tonight, down to that three point eight percent increase, uh, total of thirty four zero five five nine eight five. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the article and move it to public hearing as written? Shannon with a motion, can I get a second? I have Terry with a second. Any further questions, any further discussion on this? Yes, thank you. Alright, all in favor, one, two, three, four, and none opposed. We will move on to Article fourteen. This is the Capital Reserve Expendable Trust Fund for Facilities, six hundred and seventy five thousand. Can I get a motion to accept it as written and move it to public hearing? Shannon with a motion, Terry with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, one, two, three, four. Article fifteen, sorry, I gotta go down to Article fifteen. This is the Capital Reserve Fund for the Technology Expendable Trust Fund. This will be in the amount of seventy five thousand dollars, the creation of uh, this fund in its first year. Can I get a motion to accept it as written and move it on to public hea- hearing? Shannon, can I get a second? Terry? Any further discussion? All in favor, hi, that's one, two, three, four. And then Article sixteen, our last one tonight, this is the New Vehicle Expendable Trust Fund, an initial deposit of thirty thousand dollars. Coming out of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Can I get a motion to accept this as written to move on to public hearing? Shannon with a motion, Terry with a second, all in favor, one, two, three, four. Alright, so we have our four articles to move on to public hearing. We will not have an Article seventeen.
Sorry to interrupt, is that the order?
That is the order, yes, yep. Yeah, there's no, I don't think there's any reason to change that. Thirteen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, how many did we do? We did five. Thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen, no, we did sixteen, yeah, we did five articles, twelve through sixteen, yes.
Yeah, so those warrant articles, that that is how they're funded as funds are available, so that's why the order is important.
Perfect, that makes, that makes perfect sense, okay? Alright, so moving on now, uh, quickly talking about public hearing, because this will be our only chance to gather before the public hearing. In terms of presentations, and I see that our, this is where we should just nominate Shannon, I think, to do the facilities. I mean, she left, and so I think she has to do that, so let's actually hold off on that until she gets back. We'll, we'll discuss the public hearing presentations when she does get back. I don't want to assign that to her. Uh, looking at the rest of the agenda, I think we've hit on just about everything on there except for. Policies, which is under Shannon's purview as well. So, oh yes, we did want to talk about seventh and eighth grade, so um, I know one item. So one of the items we just wanted to touch upon again, Mount Vernon is undergoing its facility review process. So I thought it was a good time for Steve and Mike to be able to give us an update on this. Uh, as we continue to talk about our facilities plans, they're talking about theirs, and there are naturally questions from the community as to what happens if Mount Vernon eventually leaves Amherst Middle School. Um, so Steve, if you want to, I don't know if it's going to be you or Mike that has the initial update, and then we can just um, you know, get get that update and go from there.
So just a a little update where M V is, M V is. Um, last year, they put a sixty thousand dollar warrant article um, for a facility study that passed. Um, we have, the M V has formed a committee of board members and community members. Um, we have defined the scope of the study to include uh, preschool, their own uh, in resident preschool. Um, take a look at, um, also um, uh, increased facility due to enrollment. Um, M V, if you look at the NASDAQ report. Thirty something, don't quote me on it, and thirty something, they're looking at classes over sixty, um, and that's hard to have two. Um, you're right, because they're, they're, they're committed to two, two, um, so it's. So it's fifty, so yeah, it's fifty seven, I think, two would be thirty each class, so they're looking to, um, we're gonna need like three classrooms for bubbles. And then the third part is the seventh and eighth grade. They're exploring the seventh, eighth grade. So we have two vendors, uh, M V is interviewing, uh, January third, January tenth, to select a architect engineering firm to conduct this study. Um, that'll take a year um, to work with community members and work with administration to define the scope. Um, so it's conceivable, they will have an estimate for the March of two thousand twenty five. Um, for either one of those three or none of those, right? I mean, so those are the possibilities. So if they went, let's say they went to the town in March of two thousand twenty five with the number that it would take to keep the seventh and eighth graders in Mount Vernon. And that passed, it's a six month, eight month design, and then you build. So you're looking at September of twenty six, twenty seven to open, if everything went super quick. So you're looking at, you know, four, actually twenty seven, twenty, you're looking at four years before we have to. You know, if the board decided to go four years, study, pass, design, build, move it. Um, and so there are options on the tuition agreement that was negotiated, and the, uh, Mount Vernon Board understands that. As they get closer to this, they would reach out and look to extend, mutually extend the contract. So they're um, just beginning the process. And we'll keep you posted as we go.
And you said the earliest completion, Steve, would be twenty six?
I think twenty seven, actually, now that I'm looking at twenty seven, and that would be super. March of twenty five, votes, yeah, two years, one year build, one year plan, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, crazy aggressive. Not many things in passing in Hampshire on the first. And they got to define preschool, three classrooms, and what middle school looks like. Um, we're working at four or five classrooms, so we're looking at almost doubling the size of that place if they go all in on all three options.
Yeah, and we're talking about larger enrollment, pre K, and then seven and eight.
You got it. Those are the three areas of the scope.
Any questions or any thoughts, comments from the board following up on that, Shannon?
I have a quick question. Would their preschool be a tuition-based program? Like, would it be like what we have at Clark?
Yeah, it would be a special inclusionary preschool.
Yep.
So they take tuition from the regular rate and provide special. There's uh, fifteen preschools right now, certain related services. That, you know, Heather believes we're getting close to, you know, having enough um, capacity to have their own preschool, but we don't have the building.
So there are fifteen students are coming to Amherst now?
No, so no, these are related services, so uh, preschool from Mount Vernon come to, come to Amherst for program. Um, and those are kids that are in the program, but we have, so like, um, for example, uh, Mount Vernon has their own preschool speech teacher. So, so if they, if the kids just need speech, they don't go to Amherst for speech, they get speech actually in Mount Vernon, where the speech teacher comes and they come in for two hours a day, a couple of times a week, or an hour a day, a couple of times. So there's fifteen students really the service, totally paid for by the Mount Vernon budget and Mount Vernon staff. The ones that Kathleen gets the pleasure and honor are the program youngsters, youngsters with significant complexity. Does that make sense?
You'd be able to combine those, you'd be able to combine the service kids with the program, make that fully full preschool option in Mount Vernon.
Okay, because the fifteen kids right now getting related service is grown a lot. It used to be like five, and our child find there is pretty active. So um, Heather is concerned it's going to grow to twenty. And um, like, Amherst doesn't have the capacity to take all these wonderful littles, um, so then you're looking at Mount Vernon and New Boston, all that nonsense, or your own. And what we think, at least we're trying to advocate for littles being educated in their home little town, as opposed to running in the car seat and driving all over the country.
Okay.
And we'll keep you posted all the time, we promise.
Any other questions, thoughts? I know Shannon, this is one item that you wanted to add to the agenda here.
Yeah, well, and I was specific, I was specifically interested in the number of of students that we would um. Potentially no longer have and what that looked like to our tuition revenue. Which I believe is.
About sixty kids, thirty grades?
Sixty seven is, I think, I I, we'll dig in after I have the initial question.
It was sixty nine this year? Seventy.
But I mean, we're looking at.
At about a million.
Two thousand twenty seven is when this is gonna happen, so potentially maybe upwards of eighty kids by that.
Yeah, it grows a little bit.
It grows a little bit, so, and it was, what's that, you said seventy three kids is one point five million, so roughly one point seven million, give or take? And the current tuition agreement does have extensions, which we're gonna need to revisit anyway, because we're in year three of a five-year agreement.
Yep, and the board, M V is aware that the, that no matter how fast this goes, it's going to extend beyond the original five.
Correct, and this is the reason we did five years with our project and then with their desire to potentially look at a project as well, so. Though the, it was part of the initial conversations why we didn't extend it to ten years, like we had done the last time.
Yep, no, you, you, very well planned, very well thought. Um, it's a, it's a big, the facility needs at Mount Vernon are a big lift, preschool plus enrollment increases, plus middle seven and eight, that's a big lift. Um, in a community with just a two point, um, Emmerich has two point three billion dollars worth of property, and a guess on Mount Vernon? Three hundred and thirty million. It's tiny. Opti ten is now a, is now nine hundred million. When I was there, it was like seven hundred bucks. So it's half, it's, it's three hundred and thirty millions. Tiny. Um, their, their revenue, and it's just much different than two point three billion dollars worth of property.
From a revenue perspective, this makes a difference, Steve, but when we're talking seventy kids or eighty kids, you're talking essentially only two and a half classrooms, give or take. You're not really saving a lot of space, so even if we go forward with a one through five project, taking fifth graders out of. A M S doesn't really change the calculus of what we have for space needs in that building, essentially, and and this, there's no great way to say this, but just bear with me as I go through the train of thought. You're just talking about fewer teachers and fewer classrooms that you're filling, but it's not enough where you could bring fifth grade back into that building and then consolidate pre K and K over into the new Clark Wilkins. I mean, we're still, nothing changes in terms of our space needs or space opportunities if Mount Vernon leaves, because it's such a small cohort of kids.
It's not perfect, it's a class and a half.
Yeah.
Like, if it was twenty kids, you could say, oh, we're gonna reduce by one teacher, and it's one for one.
Reduce that revenue.
It's a, it's a class and a half, plus there's a pedagogical, let alone just the structural, there's a pedagogical decision that we kind of care about.
But either way, you're not gonna bring seven or eight fifth grade classrooms back in when you're losing potentially three to four, seven and eight grade classrooms total. So it doesn't really do much for us in terms of our planning needs. It would give us additional space at A M S, and and maybe it's different programming offerings at that point. But nothing structurally changing or fundamentally changing in how we have to worry about facilities going forward. So gotta fix the heat in those rooms.
Yeah, I I agree with that summary. Yeah, I think you're right on, Tom.
Okay. Anything else on that? It, good, okay. Uh, so we talked quickly, Shannon, about presentations for public hearing. Um, we volunteered you for everything because you left the room, so. Um, but in all seriousness, um, I don't know how how the board wants to to do this, but. I would like to ask if you would like to do the bond hearing presentation on Monday night, or at least if if it's not entirely you, if it's a tag team approach. I'm, I'm fine doing that with you, or if Terry wants to do some of it with you. Um, I'm also fine doing the budget on Tuesday. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, let me look at the days. Sorry, it's Monday, the eighth is the bond hearing, and then Tuesday, the ninth is the budget hearing. So we need to discuss who's going to do.
Sure, yeah, no, I'm happy, I'm happy to do the um, the bond hearing.
Okay.
I may want some support on, on part of it, so on the buy, you know.
Crafting it or on the night of?
Crafting it, and I don't, the night of, I don't, I'm not sure yet. I think I have to craft it first and then think about what makes sense. Is that back?
Yeah, that's fine.
Have to decide that.
No, we don't, we don't, we're not voting on anything, it's just a matter of who's gonna do the homework.
Yeah, so we can. Yeah, if you're comfortable with that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, does that work? Alright, uh, and then in terms of budgets, would anybody else like to volunteer for that? I'm more than happy to do it again if if needed. Um, we won't have two people work on it and have one present it. I figure budget and um. All the warrant articles that follow it, if we want to divide those up, we can. Um, anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'm happy to take the Capital Reserve Fund warrant article, I feel like that.
Well, on that night, we'll also have, well, well, uh, because we're ready to the bond hearing, but we have to still present that warrant article on the night of the public hearing. It'll be, it's not gonna be the full presentation, it'll just be, hey, this is what we talked about last night, okay? Um, Jason, would you like to do anything? Uh, do you want to do the Capital Reserve Funds? I'll do budget, and we can do, have you do, uh, is that fourteen, fifteen, sixteen? Okay.
And then what we did last year is we had an abbreviated version of the bond in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shannon will, we'll cover that, so yeah. Um, she'll do that, the bond hearing with Terry, and then on that night as well, Shannon can just do that presentation for Article twelve.
So you have this presentation um, that I gave tonight, and then you might want to go back. Um, and I can reshare if you want the the first one, because there's some initial slides. I don't know if you want to use any of those.
Okay.
Um, and then if you want to look at last year, what we pulled over into this one, I sent that to Shannon as well. Yeah, should, I think you, you guys have everything, but I can sort of resend them, so they're top of your inbox.
I feel bad having Tim not represented at all, because we're all kind of taking a piece, maybe default.
Let's talk with him first, we can, we can circle back with him and see what he'd like to do. I'll, I'll send him an email about it, um, and just see. I'll start that email now. We can just, we can follow up with him and just see what he's comfortable presenting, because maybe it's some of the, it's either default or it's some of the warrant articles, it's fine, we can, we can determine that, so.
I have another question. So I believe that last year, the public.
I have another question. So I believe that last year at the public hearing, the team from Banwell and DEW were in attendance.
Were they there or were they?
They were there.
Okay. They were there at deliberatives. I, I can remember.
Um, well, I don't, I deliberative, I don't think the moderator would allow them to.
Fair point.
Speak. So I, I don't know how that will look this year, but for public, for the purposes of public hearing, um, do we want them there? And, and if so, are they, are we able to have them offer any color to any portions where a technical answer may be more?
Yeah, I think if we have them there to answer questions, I don't think they need to present anything. But yeah.
Not presenting at all, but just as a technical.
Our public hearing.
That was my question. I don't want to waste anyone's time inviting them as.
No, I, I think it's our public hearing, so I'm fine and we're, I'm fine inviting them. So if they're able to come, they don't need to have their full team come in. If they just have somebody there.
Deliberative is the moderator runs it. Like, I feel like this is our meeting, so we have, we should have, this is the one.
I would agree.
I mean, or both, but like, uh, deliberative last year, they weren't even allowed to.
Yeah, deliberative is, is a little more formal. I mean, we can certainly talk with Ellen as we get to that point, but let's plan on this for a public hearing now and deliberate, we can reevaluate later if we need to. Okay. All right. So that is everything there. The last piece, Shannon.
Sorry, one more thing.
Yep.
Um, so I also just in preparation for the public hearing, um, Banwell did put together some conceptual exterior rendering. So I forwarded that to the board, just so you can, I mean, obviously you'll see the deck before. And then there's also some, the interior photos that you see, I just wanted to highlight, those are, um, those are inspirational photos. Um, just to give a, a feel for what it could look like, should it pass. These aren't like, this is what we're exactly going to look like or do, just some, some inspirational photos as to what this space could look like. Um, that's it. I just wanted to, because I just sent that email to you.
Yeah, I just see it coming now. So thank you. All right. The last piece we had, Shannon, was, uh, in your wheelhouse as well, policies. We had the first read tonight. Um, before anybody has any questions, any color you'd like to provide, I think these are all carryovers from the SAU meeting on November thirtieth.
They are, and I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, our chair, our policy committee chair, Sarah Lawrence, did a fantastic job of creating a, um, chart. Uh, and it's in our packet. I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling. Thank you all. Okay, you know, you know where it is. So on page one oh two in the packet, um, that highlights kind of what, where we are and what the changes are. And that's pretty much everything you need to know unless you have some nuanced question that I can attempt to answer, um, for you.
Now, are we just, are we voting on these to approve these tonight as, as, I know it says first reading, but I, I know we talked last at the SAU meeting that that was going to be considered first reading and these, we're going to be finalizing them now. So I'm, I'm really.
I think we can, and I think that would be expedition.
I, I think that would be as well. So I will take a motion to, uh, accept the policies, uh, as written or as presented here tonight in the agenda packet.
Can we ask any questions? I had, I just had one question about JFAB.
Sure.
So. So in JFAB, the admission of tuition in non-residence students, just in the policy. Um, and this might not actually be a question for you, Shannon. This might be a question for administration as to how it's executed. Um, it says like, frequently it says, if there's space available, if there's space available, if there's space available. What's the metric that we use to determine if space is actually available?
It's usually a case by case situation, depending on grade level, uh, depending on capacity within the class, depending on, um, after a, a file review and conversation with other schools, seeing if it's the right fit and we have the resources and the capacity and the space to absorb another student. So, and that's in partnership with building administration, SAU and, and the other school or former school.
Are we using like, um, because I know we have like the board classroom size. So is that, is that, I guess I was wondering like, is that what we're using as like the space available? I knew the other stuff and I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Now I'll take that motion to, uh, accept the policies as recommended in the packet tonight.
I will make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion from Shannon. Terry with a second. All in favor? It's one, two, three, four, and none opposed. All right. So we will open it up now for our second and final public comment of the night. I see a few folks that are online. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand, uh, turn on your camera. Uh, and if your full name is not in your avatar, please put that in there as well. We'll open it up for in person first. Seeing nobody in person, we will open it up for the folks that are online. If you'd like to speak, please raise your virtual hands. Going once, twice, and gone. So that will end our public comment for tonight. We will close that. There is no public, uh, no non-public meeting to, uh, no non-public session tonight, but we do have a non-meeting tonight. So I will take a motion to adjourn our regular business meeting here tonight.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Shannon. Terry with a second. Uh, all in favor? One, two, three, four. We are adjourned at eight eleven tonight. Thank you everybody for coming and, uh, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a great start to the new year.